...
...to the public, we invite you to join us and participate in council proceedings. For those of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your cable station, Channel 35. We can be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or via council forum. It is now 10:20 a.m. and we have nine members present, one shy of a quorum. But this being Friday, as is customary, we have a number of presentations and special introductions scheduled. Let's begin today's meeting by recognizing Councilwoman Gruel.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Today is quite a celebratory day with so many wonderful awards and many of us were upstairs just a moment ago with the pioneer women that I know each of us are going to be able to introduce and acknowledge. But I had the opportunity to acknowledge another group this morning. I'm honored to be here today to have the organization Basic Adult Spanish Education, or BASE, here at council today. These students are here as part of their civics lesson at Hazelton Elementary. After spending weeks in the classroom about the three branches of government, the state and local governments, and their roles as citizens, they're here to witness a council session. I am pleased to be part of bringing to life the lessons taught in a classroom. And I know from my experience coming to City Hall when I was a young person in high school, it was quite exciting to see the government at work, to see this beautiful building and how exciting it is, and to learn about how government works in Los Angeles. But I wanted to recognize their importance, not only as my constituents, but to all of the San Fernando Valley. Since 1987, BASE has educated more than 5,000 individuals without charging fees and offering access to better paying jobs. Through collaborative efforts with churches, community organizations, and schools, they are able to offer courses at 11 different locations, including Hazelton Elementary School in my district. BASE's goal is to help teach Hispanics to read and write in Spanish and speak, read and write in English, and give their students more access to jobs. BASE achieves this by building on their Spanish literary skills gradually, introducing English life skills and job skills. Now, what I found to be most unique about this organization is their civics course. BASE, as many of us do, feel that each constituent plays an important role in their government. This class goes beyond just teaching the basics. It emphasizes that as citizens, they have a voice, whether it be in picking up the phone to call our offices when there are problems, or to go out and vote. They prove that it is very important never too late to go back to school, to get an education and achieve our goals. I'd like to present this certificate to Tom Taylor with my appreciation to BASE, that all of you done for the students and our community, and particularly to acknowledge, we do have certificates for all of you behind me, but it might take us an hour to hand them all out right now. But I wanted to, we will be able to do that, Allison, from my staff in the back, and take pictures. But want to thank you all and hope maybe you can help me get back into my Spanish. Habla español un poquito, so I have to practice a bit, so maybe you all can help me with that. But I wanted to acknowledge BASE for all that they do. Your work for the people of the San Fernando Valley and for our constituents is very much appreciated. Let's give a great round of applause for the BASE organization today.
I would just like to, on behalf of my board of directors and our executive director, thank Mrs. Gruel for taking this time out in a busy schedule to do a presentation to our organization and what we do. This class that's here with me today is basically a childcare class, which is they're learning job training skills for childcare. And in addition to that class, we have an English literacy and civics portion that goes with that. So they have learned all about the United States' history and government, and we just completed going through all the different governmental levels, et cetera, and how things happen. So it's really a great honor and thrill for all of us to come down and be able to watch how the City Council actually operates, so that they can see in real life what it really is all about, and it really makes what they've learned in the class come home to them. So thank you all very much, and we appreciate it.
And just before we leave, so you all know, the chairs here are for the 15 city council members that represent our city council. Councilmember Padilla, who sits at the front there, is our city council president from the San Fernando Valley. And then we have two other elected, or three other elected officials in the city that don't attend our council meetings. Some say probably luckily they don't come every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday with us, but is the mayor, James Hahn, our city attorney, Rocky Daddio, and our controller, Laura Chick. There'll be a test on that later. But again, thank you so very much. We're gonna have, Allison's gonna have you get your proclamations, and then we'll take a picture in the back. I have one more presentation before we do that, so. Thank you. Frank Cheftel and the group in the back. Oh. Colleagues, I have the opportunity to make another presentation this morning, and if you see on your desk this wonderful golden box, that's from The Candy Factory in the San Fernando Valley. And also, I think he told me my favorite, which is, of course, chocolate-covered strawberries are in the back as well. And some for, he brought some for all of the guests today, so I think for that, we should give him a big round of applause. We're celebrating today The Candy Factory's 25th anniversary. They're the largest and oldest candy-making supplier on the West Coast, having been teaching the art of confection for the last 25 years. Frank Cheftel has been coined North Hollywood's real-life equivalent of Willy Wonka. He went to Grant High School, and he took a particular interest in confections when his parents owned a company that distributed nuts and candy for vending machines. Frank is the company's third owner, having purchased the business 12 years ago after it was started by two schoolteachers in 1978. Los Angeles is home to a number of candy-making suppliers, but only The Candy Factory conducts hands-on candy-making classes on a regular basis. Some of the specialty candy that you get at The Candy Factory include chocolate-covered potato chips, which maybe in my condition I will have a craving for at some point, as well as butter-toughy pretzels and chocolate Oscar statuettes. Oh, we don't make those anymore. Okay, that's right. He doesn't make any chocolate Oscar statuettes. That's the lawsuit, that's right. The Candy Factory has more than 5,000 chocolate molds, including everything from a carousel complete with horses and even life-sized telephones. The Candy Factory has satisfied our sweet tooth for 25 years, and we look forward to getting our chocolate Elvises and chocolate high-hail shoes at The Candy Factory for many years to come. I'm just pleased when Frank told me that this was their 25th anniversary year, and not only has it been a while, he has been a wonderful company that he and his family have had, but additionally Frank has been someone who has been very active in our community, someone who has been out there recently helping us paint graffiti, plant trees, you name it. And for those of you that watched the Regis and Kelly Show, Frank was selected when they sent in a makeover opportunity, and he sent in a letter and said that he'd, do you mind if I tell the story, that he had run for office on the secession issue, and that, you know, it didn't pass there, and he thought maybe if he had a makeover, he might have won. So he was selected, went back to New York, and was on the Regis and Kelly Show with the makeover. For those of you that know him before, he had a beard, a ponytail in the back, and we have a hard time recognizing him every day. But anyways, I just wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge The Candy Factory, their commitment to the San Fernando Valley, to North Hollywood, and to the city as a whole. These businesses really are the heart and soul of Los Angeles. So it is my pleasure to present you with a certificate to The Candy Factory for your 25 years of confection in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations, Frank.
Councilwoman Gruel, I'd like to thank you. I'm a native of Los Angeles, born and raised in the valley, my whole life there, and I'm pleased to have a business there. It's tough, you know, these days in the economic times to run a small mom-and-pop shop, but we've hung in there, and it's from the support of the community, and we really appreciate that. The boxes that you all have in front of you are real important, they're special, they're our anniversary boxes. They're dusted with 24-karat gold dust, and they, it's edible, it's all edible, and it's actually, we've applied to the Guinness Book of World Records for the most expensive chocolate box. So we've actually been approved, and we're sending them everything to get the certification. So you have the first 15 limited-edition chocolate boxes, hopefully certified by the Guinness Book of World Records. So I'd like to thank you all, I appreciate the support, and we look forward to another 25 years of business in the city of Los Angeles.
I just also, State Assembly Member Keith Richman also wanted to make sure that we presented the certificate appreciation to you and to your family, and Frank's mother is here as well, and father, oh, there, I'm sorry, and mother and fathers, let's give them a great round of applause as well. Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. President, appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Gruel. Members, for our next series of presentations, let me acknowledge Councilmember Jan Perry, and have her be joined by Paula Petrotta to begin our annual Pioneer Women Awards presentation. Ms. Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I believe Paula Petrotta is gonna join me up here. And thank you for your consideration. Lady who's about to join us up here is a very special lady, and I have to make some additional presentations this morning, but I absolutely positively tend to be here with her, because she is so special. And so once I'm done, then Paula will share with you the mission behind the Pioneer Women Program. It's my privilege to recognize an incredible woman who represents what it means to be a pioneer woman, and this is Mrs. Mary Knolls, whom we affectionately call Mother Knolls. She is a mother, a teacher, and a community advocate. Mrs. Knolls continues to bring her intense energy and community pride to South Los Angeles, and in particular, the Ninth Council District. She has a long and illustrious history of protecting her neighborhood from blight, rallying the community, working closely with the Los Angeles Police Department in an effort to improve the quality of life for her family, friends, neighbors, and children. Mary first got involved with the community through her Children's PTA Association, and from there, her commitment grew and bloomed into what she is today. One story that really encapsulates her fire, her energy, and her passion occurred back when Gilbert Lindsay was councilman. She was a block club member and became the head of her block club after the riots in 1965. When Mr. Lindsay became the new councilman, her first encounter with him was not a peaceful one. The city had decided to tear down an old, dilapidated apartment building at the end of her street and changed the zoning from four to six units, that was to increase the density in a single-family neighborhood. As a homeowner and community member and neighborhood advocate, she fought for anything she felt would hurt her community. On the day of the demolition, she stood in front of the tractor and dared them to move. It must have been quite a sight, but of course, you were always a lady. It was that single act of defiance that stopped the city from changing the zoning and changed their way of thinking. From that day on, Mother Knolls and Councilmember Lindsay shared a mutual respect for each other, and she became an important voice for the community. To this day, Mrs. Knolls continues to work with the Police Department, hold block club meetings in her home, and actively involve herself in the community. She shares the goal that we all share, bringing and maintaining peace in our community. Her positive attitude and willingness to commit her time and her energy is truly an inspiration. Not only is she a mother to her daughter here behind her today, but a mother to us all who know her, because she nurtures and helps not only her children and family, but her whole community to grow and to prosper. Mother Mary Knolls is a true pioneer woman, and I am proud to have her here today on behalf of the Ninth Council District, because it is women like her who make our city such a wonderful place in which to live. Congratulations. Never one to be shy, Mrs. Knolls has a pronouncement to make.
Councilwoman Jan Perry, of the signatures in the council chambers, and all of the people involved and other honorees. I wanted to thank Councilwoman Jan Perry for recognizing me. She and I have a long history of working in the trenches together, and I must say, even though I'm anxious, she treated me like I was a young lady, and I love her because she walks with kings and angels, but she never loses common touch. She gets in the trenches with us. Thank you, I'm honored to receive this honor, and I will do the rest the best I can for as long as I have breath. God bless all of you.
Ninety years ago, a small group of women organized a parade that would help change the U.S. Constitution and win political power for half of the American population. On March 3rd, 1913, a band of suffragists in Washington staged such a remarkable demonstration for women's rights that has long been acknowledged as one of the high points in the 72-year drive for the women's vote in the United States, and stands as a lasting testament to the long and final successful effort of the American women's suffrage movement. Commemorating the 90th anniversary of the parade recognizes the importance as a key strategic turning point of the modern suffragette movement. However, while this historic event pays tribute to the overall efforts of generations of American women striving for democracy, as recently as the 1970s, women's history and contributions to our society was virtually an unknown topic in schools or in the general public consciousness. To address this issue, in March 1980, President Jimmy Carter issued a presidential message to the American people encouraging the recognition of women's historic accomplishments. The theme for 2003 Women's History Month is Women Pioneering the Future, incorporating both pioneering women from the United States' history who led and won struggles for equality and civil rights, and innovative women of today who continue to expand the frontiers of possibility for generations to come. There's much talk about women's roles and contributions. On September 11th, that was apparent, when we saw women firefighters running into burning buildings, women paramedics attending to those injured, women law enforcement officers standing guard to protect us, women volunteers frantically working to save someone they did not even know. And now we see young women going to war. Every day, women are making contributions to this city, to this community, to this country. This year marks the 13th year of the Joint City Council Commission Pioneer Women Program in celebration of Women's History Month. And every year, we're amazed at the caliber and distinction of our pioneer women. This year is no exception. Your awardees are women who give tirelessly to our communities, our schools, who raise families, who raise consciousness. We salute the 2003 women pioneers. We thank the city council for your participation and your leadership in recognizing women who in their own right are everyday heroines. Thank you, councilmembers.
Thank you, Paula. For our next presentation, we've now been joined by the Chair of the Department of Humanities Committee, Councilmember Jack Weiss.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Come on, folks. This is, this is a real honor for me to stand here with Carmen Warshaw, the great Carmen Warshaw. Will everybody please join me in recognizing? I see, I see a lot of, I see a lot of recognition, I see Janice over here, and Tom, and Wendy, and all sorts, Eric, Ruth, everybody around this worship, Alex Padilla, the chair, absolutely. Everybody here knows Carmen Warshaw, and everybody knows an awful lot about why she is so deserving to be named as one of our pioneer women this year. Let me tell you a little bit more about her. She's a native Angelino, and I will get the words out, she is a Trojan, a proud Trojan. And in fact, it was at USC where she first developed her lifelong and intense interest in serving the public, in being involved in government and the political process, along with her husband, her late husband, Louis Warshaw, who many of us in the community still miss a great deal to this day. And I believe, is this correct, that you have attended every Democratic National Convention since 1948? It's an extraordinary record, and these aren't just attendances, these are major appearances, and she has had a major impact on the course of the National Democratic Party for generations. She's held numerous offices within the party, culminating with her position in 1968 with the DNC. She's served on many statewide and national boards. She's been chairperson of the California Fair Employment Practices Commission. She's been a member of the Coastal Commission, South Coast Region, and she has had an extraordinarily active and impressive life in the community and philanthropic ventures. She's been a benefactor of the Music Center, a founder of the Los Angeles Civic Light Opera. She's served on the President's Council of Lacta, the Executive Committee of the Jewish Federation Council of Prater LA. She's been a national, an honorary national vice-chairwoman of the Anti-Defamation League, a life member of Hadassah, a life member of the NAACP, and holds a doctorate of Humanities from the University of Judaism. Now, one thing I want to highlight for you all in particular is Carmen and Lou's extraordinary dedication to Cedars-Sinai. Just last week, I was privileged to be at a dinner that Carmen organized in honor of a chair that the family has endowed for prostate cancer research at Cedars. And there were two extraordinary things about this event. One was that, as in events past, it raises an extraordinary amount of money to do the extraordinarily important work they do at Cedars to fight prostate cancer. But the other thing that really struck me, Carmen, was there were people at the dinner. There are people at the dinner who are literally alive today because of the dinner last year. And there are people there last year who are alive and who are grateful to you and to your family for the leadership and the dedication you have, and to see them there meant all the difference to me and my wife. I'm sure it meant all the difference to you and your terrific family. And so I'd like to ask everybody on the council to join me in congratulating an extraordinarily deserving recipient of the Pioneer Women honors that we can accord here on the City Council, the great, the unique Carmen Warshaw.
Before we hear from her, Ms. Galant.
I just, Carmen, I just want to say congratulations in public. As I've told you many times, you really are my role model. I want to be the next dragon lady. It's very important to me, and I want to say thank you in public for all that you have taught me about retaining a sense of humor, a sense of candor, and the ability, the sense of candor in public when necessary. Your contributions, of course, are limitless, and the rest of your family seems to be carrying on and find tradition, and somebody must have taught them to do that, so I just want to say thank you.
Mr. Laban.
Thank you, Mr. President. Hope you've been a great friend of Los Angeles, and you're a great friend of John Farrell's, and also your wonderful daughter Hope went to high school with John Marshall, so it's so pleased to see you be honored so eloquently by Jack Weiss. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Jack said that I have a moment of rebuttal. I'm almost overwhelmed, but not quite. I just want to say to you, thank you very much, I wish you good luck, and try to see all sides of an issue, which is very difficult, and be good councilman, and good luck to all of you, and lots of luck in your next election. Bye-bye.
Mr. President, it's my pleasure to be here on behalf of our colleague Cindy Misakowski, who, for very legitimate medical reasons, she's gonna be fine, couldn't be here today to honor Barbara Goldenberg as the Council District 11 recipient of the Pioneer Woman Award. And it's nice, it's nice to have you here with us, Barbara. Barbara is known in her Brentwood neighborhood as the Tree Lady. Her pioneering spirit is evident in her commitment and dedication to improving her community, her environment, and her city, a commitment that began in Brentwood over 20 years ago, when she and many others noticed the many moderate pines that were dying in the Brentwood Park neighborhood where you live, and you immediately embarked upon a project to rescue and replace these dying trees. Over the past 20 years, Barbara's involvement has grown to include serving as a member of the Brentwood Park Property Owners Association, the San Vicente Design Review Board. Brentwood's beautiful, Brentwood's green, and she's one of the founding members of SOS Coral Trees in the Veterans Park Reserve. I mean, any of you who know West Los Angeles, I see Mr. Garcetti nodding up and down because he's driven past those coral trees thousands and thousands of times. They don't just get there by accident, they don't just stay the way they are, they don't just serve as the symbol and the signature of that community based on nature. Nature helps, but nature needs some help, and Barbara, you've been at the forefront of making that part of Los Angeles so beautiful and such a shining exemplar for the rest of us. Barbara graduated from Stanford with a degree in political science, as did my mother, and later returned to Pierce College to study horticulture and landscaping. Her husband, the late Joe Goldenberg, and she's the mother of Amy Goldenberg. They also founded the Goldenberg Youth House to honor the memory of their son, Bill, who was lost so tragically some time ago. And the facility provides before-and-after school daycare and classes and services, a safe, fun place for kids to congregate when they're not at school. Now, whenever, whenever you are in Brentwood, in my view, as somebody who spends an awful lot of time there, I mean, I, every week, we travel from my house down through your neighborhood to the country market for lunch, and we have the opportunity to really witness and experience... to the Country Market for lunch, and we have the opportunity to really witness and experience and benefit from everything that you have done for the Brentwood community over the years. And I want to read a quote from Barbara that she told the Brentwood News when she was chosen as Brentwood Citizen of the Year in the year 2000. "When you're standing under a beautiful tree on a hot day, there's nothing like it. Without trees, the planet would be a desert." And Barbara has lived that credo for a generation in Brentwood. And on behalf of my friend Cindy Misakowski, I want to congratulate you as the recipient of the Council District 11 Pioneer Woman of the Year. Congratulations.
Mr. Laban.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just know Barbara, I want to congratulate you, Barbara, for all you've done. And when I work for the mayor, work for Water Power, you're truly, all of your angels in the City of Angels, but she's a special angel because she got her hands dirty and planted trees. Because when you plant trees, they grow. And then they're long after our time, so God bless you, and congratulations on all the beautiful work you've done.
Well, I think it's a lot more gratifying to think locally and act locally. It's been wonderful working in my own community where I can see the results of all the fun that I'm having, really. But I'm promising, I just took a bad spill of skiing, and I promise to spend a lot less time on the slopes and a lot more time in the 11th Council District.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, for your presentation. We'll recognize Councilmember Warshaw.
Thank you very much, President. Colleagues, and may I also say that I think this is a wonderful tradition that we do every March as we celebrate Women's History Month. And I know I probably would like the rest of you, it's always difficult to choose one woman to be our Pioneer Woman of the Year. There are so many women in the city of Los Angeles that have truly made a difference in this city, but I overwhelmingly decided to choose as my Pioneer Woman Lucia Moreno Naras. So proud to be standing with you today, Lucia. And I chose Lucia because I really feel like she has given of herself her time, her talents, to genuinely improve the quality of life for residents of Wilmington, who probably would not have been able to have the kind of services that Lucia has made possible. Sensing a lack of resources for the people in Wilmington to obtain much-needed loans and other financial resources, Lucia worked closely with her church to establish the Family Federal Credit Union in November of 1983 to serve the community of the Holy Family Church and the residents in Wilmington. Lucia currently serves as the CEO of the Family Federal Credit Union. This credit union has grown quickly and has provided much-needed services to people in Wilmington, including basic financial services, savings, check cashing, loans, credit cards, checking accounts, money transfers, and financial education, as well as, I love this part, as well as free workshops open to the community on such things as how to buy a car, how to buy a house, how to buy car insurance, how to teach your child to save, how to prepare a budget, how to manage your credit, how to get out of debt, how to repair your credit, how to survive the holidays. I like that one. Why I should have a will and how to start a small business, as well as many other valuable workshops. Family Federal Credit Union now has close to 4,000 members, 423 of them. Listen to this, under the age of 16. A staff of nine and assets of $9 million. As you can see, in my opinion, Lucia is truly a pioneer woman in her community. And besides that, she also has been involved in the Harvard Area Planning Commission. The Wilmington, she was part of the founding, members of the Wilmington Neighborhood Council, the Wilmington YMCA, and she's a member of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce. She also, in her spare time, works as a volunteer for Habitat Humanity as part of the Family Selection Committee. And she's also been a past or a member of the Harvard Watts Economic Development Committee. And aside all that, like all women, she is multi-tapped and she can have it all. And she's a wonderful wife and a mother. She is married to Roberto Linares and has two children, Eduardo, who is 11, and Alejandra, who is 13 years old. I am so pleased and so honored to honor you, Lucia, as truly a Pioneer Woman who has improved the quality of life for people in ways that I can't think of anyone else who's done such a good job. Congratulations. Thank you very much. I think all of us, all 15 of us, be honored today. Not to brag, but there are many people in the whole city that are deserving and that are pioneers. I would like to thank my mom, who's here, a true pioneer. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for our next presentation, or series of presentations, and we call up Councilmember Ruker Saez, Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Pacheco.
We're going to go in chronological order. We're all from Glazal Park, and we thought it would be great to celebrate this as one community. I have the honor of being here with Miriam Escobar. She was born in Guatemala and played soccer as a little girl, only while hitting from repentance. And that's because she was not allowed to play because she was a girl. At the age of 18, she was finally allowed to play soccer and did so in a variety of different leagues. She's always loved the sport and always wanted to be involved with it. While today, Miriam Escobar is the Vice President of Anawak Youth Soccer Association. Has been since she was unanimously elected by board members, coaches, and trainers in 1999. Anawak is a tremendous organization that offers over 1,500 young people the opportunity to play soccer, an opportunity that would not exist otherwise. And they go through her TV and efforts to make sure they have a place for them to play. They put together cars, vehicles, they strap them straight, everything they have. I've been able to work with elected officials to get to where they are today. Miriam became involved with Anawak while searching for a new soccer league for her son Carlos. At that time, she met the leadership of Anawak at the Glazal Park Racks Center and quickly became an integral part of the organization by shaping the goals of the old association. People should know that although soccer is Anawak's reason for existence, it is education that controls how involved children are allowed to be respected teams and with the association itself. Early on, Miriam and the board members decided that academics, education come first for the children. The children are not excelling in school, are not trying their best. Anawak uses tutoring. The main goal is to mold intelligent, athletic, and proud young individuals. The day-to-day classes are assigned if a child is allowed to practice their own play in a weekend, weekend. And Miriam sees to it that every board member, coach, trainer, and parent hears to this. If the child is not able to stick with the guidelines, the future of the association will become tentative. As you might imagine, Miriam is no Nazi type of woman. If a child comes to the association as difficult or angry, the child is expected to respect and sexually adjust, the positive attitude Anawak promotes. After a short period of time, that child is not able to maintain that positive attitude, the parents, coach, and board members have a meeting to discuss the issues and see how to make the child successful. We need to understand, the people need to understand, that all this is done by volunteers. Miriam does not restrict herself to only entry-level duties. However, she also coaches a team in the association, the Mayas, made up of 11 and 12-year-old players. And on March 22nd, when Anawak started its new season, Miriam's team, as you probably already imagined, was one of the fiercest in the league. But besides breaking barriers in sports, management, hierarchy, coaching, and keeping parents, and children motivated, Miriam has been influential figure in education and politics in North East Los Angeles. Like many of us, the only thing Miriam would like to see in Anawak's future are soccer fields to play in, fields that they can one day call their own. She wants to see soccer fields at Tilly Gardens, cornfields, Round St. Patrick's Park, Glazal Park, and Lincoln Place. The entire North East, and I can tell you that I share that dream. Miriam came to this country in 1988. She has embraced this nation, she has embraced Anawak, and she embraced her community. Namaskar, si breve mente que Miriam es una hora para estar aquí con usted. Usted representa a los mamás que han sacrificado tanto para los niños, tanto como mi mamá. Estamos agradecidos por el ejemplo, lo que ahora seguimos para nuestros niños. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Buenos días. Gracias al señor Edreiz, al señor Eric Garcetti, al resto de los miembros que forman este Comité Concejal, al señor presidente Alex Padilla, por este esfuerzo que también ustedes hacen para reconocer a las mujeres que damos nuestro tiempo aparte de ser madres y esposas. También le doy gracias a Dios, a mi esposo, por el apoyo que siempre me dan, al señor Raúl Macías, que siempre estamos luchando por conseguir un espacio donde puedan jugar los niños. Lo hacemos sin recibir nada cambio. Y para mí esto es algo muy maravilloso. Y yo sé que todos juntos podemos hacer una diferencia. No podemos cambiar todo lo que está pasando, pero sabemos que si todos ponemos un granito de arena, todo se puede. Y también le agradezco a mis hijos por comprender, por el tiempo que a veces no podemos compartirlo como familia, pero se ve la diferencia. Muchas gracias, que Dios nos bendiga a todos y gracias por todo.
So, it was a pure coincidence, the three of us did not speak to each other about who we were going to be selecting, but we selected three women from the same neighborhood, Glazal Park. It says a lot about this corner of Los Angeles, which some of the best and brightest people in the city, the most active and committed individuals live in. And I will tell you one second about the woman that I'm honoring, but I also want to say to Miriam Escobar, felicidades, also to Joan Lundie, congratulations as well. I've had the honor and privilege of working with both of you, and you are both a credit to the community. But so too is Miriam Magaña, who is my Pioneer Woman of this year, 2003. Miriam has lived in Los Angeles since 1972. She came from Bogotá, Colombia, and she makes her home in Glazal Park. She has four children, Hilda, Douglas, Rafael, and, sorry, Annette, and just became recently a grandmother for the first time last week. Congratulations to her on that as well. Miriam is a firebrand, somebody who knows how to get things done in her community and how to represent a broad and diverse constituency in Glazal Park. For the last eight years, she has served as the community representative for Washington Irving Middle School in her own neighborhood. She's also the translator for the school, and really helps bridge that gap between community meetings and outreach and the community itself, and making sure that everybody can understand everything that is being said and discussed. Her accomplishments, we could probably take an entire day to talk about, but let me just share with you, with you colleagues and members of the public. She worked for the Frank Langham Incentive for People with Disabilities, and her job there was caring and advocating for children with disabilities. She traveled to hospitals and homes, forming support groups for parents of children with disabilities. She also helped to form Hispanos en Acción, a community outreach group through the St. Dominic's Church, which focused on youth and families struggling to make ends meet by helping them to pay electricity and utility bills and buying groceries. And we know that that really is the lifeline for so many people, that last safety net is the community itself, and Miriam has been an important fiber of that net. At the school where Miriam works, Washington Irving, she started a Challenger Division, a baseball team for children with disabilities. Miriam manages a parent center there, providing ESL training for parents and organized childcare through the school through the Welfare to Work program. Last year, 45 parents, and I hope you can appreciate how difficult that sort of work is, 45 parents graduated through the program that Miriam started. She also teaches healthy nutrition classes for the parents in the larger community. And last year, the Parent Center at Washington Irving Middle School was nominated for two awards. The first was from LAUSD. Because of Miriam's hard work and dedication, the school won the Parent Center of the Year from LAUSD citywide, and as a result, were awarded $5,000 to help the school and the community. And the school is also recognized nationally last year by winning the Parents and Teachers Organization of the Year, which earned them a $3,000 grant. Miriam also sits on the board of the Glazal Park Neighborhood Council as a community representative, where her focus has been on youth, schools, and families. And you'll hear from her herself, but it really is a testament to her modesty, her humility, that she wants everybody to know that she's not doing any of this alone. She really has the parents, students, and the community behind her. But as one of their greatest representatives today, it gives me great pride to first give you this bouquet of flowers. And secondly, to give you this certificate of commendation for being a Pioneer Woman, not just this year, but every year, and we thank you for your great hard work.
I'm not good at speaking in public. I usually do my work in the back. But I'm very proud to receive this honor. And besides, like I told Mr. Garcetti, behind me is a lot of people who've been working and they're being my mentors, my family, my friends. So, thank you very much. And it's a big honor being a Pioneer Woman. And en español, Pioneer means you have to be the one in front. And I'm afraid, but I honor. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias.
Mr. President, colleagues, I also want to share honoring the other recipients from City 113, but I believe that it was no coincidence that Glazal Park has recently been recognized not only by our offices, but by Cali Business Journal and by other publications talking about major improvements that are occurring in Glazal Park. And we really feel that that's a testament to the active involvement of many people, but also importantly, from these women who have shown great nearship in the community. For the 14th Council District, our Pioneer Woman of the Year is Joan Lundie. She is actively involved in the Glazal Park community, has been involved with the Glazal Park Improvement Association. She was a three-term president with the Improvement Association and continues to maintain an active role with the Glazal Park Neighborhood Council as one of the stakeholders in that organization. She was instrumental in closing down and demolishing the abandoned masonry builder site where a young woman was raped and left for dead. She's also been involved in planting over tuna trees along San Fernando Road, spearheaded a number of community cleanups to encourage neighborhood pride. She's also been involved with the New Rock Boulevard by planting a number of trees along that corridor. She's also responsible for the annual fruit tree giveaway, which the Glazal Park Improvement Association continues to sponsor. Joan is a retired geologist, has given her professional advice on issues relating to land use and development in Glazal Park. For those of you who may not be
For those of you who may not be familiar with Glassell Park, it does have a great number of hills and hill sites, so her work in analyzing soil reports on future developments is important to assure the stability of the sites prior to construction, hopefully mitigate the positive landslides in the area. She was one of the active individuals to protest the building of the public storage facility, remains of the design review board for Public Storage and McDonald's. She began her work with the Glassell Park Improvement Association in nineteen eighty-nine. Since then, has held many offices, including membership chair, says chairman by committee. Area representative, Improvement Association has been able to obtain many in-city and state services for the community. Some of the projects which she was able to spearhead with the Improvement Association was the replacement of a seventy-five-year water main on Pelmera Street, installing picnic area and a wooden gym floor at Glassell Recreation Center, demolished three nuisance properties, homes in the residential park Glassell Park. And I can tell you that she has worked very aggressively to make sure that a number of streets were repaid in the Glassell Park area. And for her activism and her involvement, and for the entire community of Glassell Park, I believe all three of us as council members are very privileged and honored to serve as their representatives, and we will continue to have a working relationship and a partnership to improve all of Glassell Park. So on behalf of my office in the city of Los Angeles, Joan, I would like to present you with this certificate of commendation as two thousand and three Pioneer Woman of the Year for the fourteenth council district. [applause] And we gave her a little gift bag of appreciation.
Thank you very much, Councilman Chaco. I want to thank my good husband and sidekick, Bill Lundie, who supports me physically, emotionally, financially, and without him, I couldn't do my busy body work. Let's see, also, thank you, Councilman Garcetti and Councilman Reyes for giving us a wonderful day for Glassell Park in nominating Mrs. Magaña and Miriam Escobar. This is a really happy day for Glassell Park. As a mother of five and grandmother of ten, I'm always ready with good advice, so I will give you a little good advice. Councilman, remember that your work is to be done here at home. What matters to your constituents is the nitty-gritty stuff here. The world will take care of itself if you'll take care of your council districts. Remember. We need soccer fields for the kids. We need the maintenance on our parks. We need our pothole stables. I ask you please to be passionate about our potholes. Thanks a lot.
That's a great, great comment. Congratulations to all you special people from Glassell Park. At this time, I'd like to call on the president of the city council, Alex Padilla, for a presentation of the seventh district.
Good morning, colleagues. Probably about twenty miles north of Glassell Park, there's another wonderful community in Los Angeles, known as Silmar. And one of the treasures of Silmar is Mission College. Members will remember that last November, we had our outside council meeting at Mission College. Well, the history of this, the recent history of Mission College was one of tension, maybe, amongst some faculty, amongst some students, but particularly among the community prior to the year two thousand, when community colleges tended to be community colleges and service the community, have a relationship with the community. We had the newest, the smallest, the most rapid community in the entire college district, having its share of issues. In July two thousand, Dr. Adriana Barrera, who was just a godsend for a community, a godsend for a college, and she brought her experience from Texas, and her wonderful skills as a woman, as a mother, to Mission College immediately went to work in resolving issues and creating strong working relationships and respect between administrators, professors, and students, but most importantly, with the community. She brought her talent, set a vision, and of course, for the college, one that serves and responds to the community, and to show or to demonstrate her success, her achievements just in the last couple of years. The college brags about through Proposition A, more than one hundred million dollars worth of investments in parking facilities, in new buildings, in additional classroom spaces, and other educational resources for the students and for the community at Mission College. In the last two years, we've seen population growth, student population growth at Mission College, ten percent and twenty percent respectively. This is a community college that's been turned around a hundred and eighty degrees. It's booming, it's thriving, it's a wonderful, wonderful success story. It came at just the right time, and it wasn't the perfect time without Adriana Barrera, without her leadership. And so, in that regard, recognizing all those accomplishments, I wanted to take this opportunity to thank her and recognize her as the pioneer woman for the seventh council district of the year two thousand, and present to her not only the certificate of commendation, but this beautiful bouquet of flowers as well. And now, I'd like her to say a few words.
I'm fortunate that the president of the city council is my city representative as well, and I'm fortunate to be able to count him as a friend. So, members of the city council, I am truly honored to be here this morning, honored for the distinction, but to be honored with so many excellent women who are really working on behalf of their communities. I see my work at Mission College as part and parcel of my responsibilities as president of Mission College. But the women that you have honored this morning are doing it from the heart, and I really acknowledge the work that they do, and acknowledge you, and thank you for presenting all of them this morning in such a wonderful ceremony. Thank you so much, it's been a pleasure.
Congratulations, and thank you for all you do at Mission College and all the wonderful community college students and professors. Very great honor. I'd like to now call on the councilman of the eighth district, Bernard C. Parks, for his presentation.
I'd like to ask Dr. Inez Bussard to come up. She's the pioneer woman award for the eighth district. She's a resident of the eighth district. She retired from the California Department of Rehabilitation, where she worked as a senior rehabilitation counselor focusing on personal and professional vocational training. She's an ordained evangelist, and under her direct ministry, she conducts quarterly food and clothes giveaway, supporting individuals and families in need of assistance. She also represents the eighth district on the city's Los Angeles Fire Alarm Task Force. She's a co-chair of the Empowerment Congress Community Safety Council. The Community Safety Council is responsible for addressing public safety issues throughout the eighth district. Under Dr. Bussard's leadership, the council has been effective in hosting community forums and sponsoring a series of emergency preparedness training, where after completing the six-week course, the stakeholder is certified by the Los Angeles Fire Department as official emergency response team members. She also is a volunteer at the World Vision, Vision LA, which is a nonprofit organization that provides free training for local churches in the fundamental stages of creating community service ministries. Vision LA also provides free supplies for local public schools and nonprofit organizations, and her additional volunteer service is a member of the Chesterfield Square Improvement Effort, which includes various stakeholders from Chesterfield Square community, working in partnership with local agencies that run the community of nuisance and illegal dumping. I'd like to present Dr. Inez Bussard as the eighth district pioneer woman pioneer of the year. [applause]
To Councilman Bernard Parks and the staff of the eighth district, I thank you for this honor. I will continue to do what I can, when I can, to make the community and the child a better place, and the city of Los Angeles, and the world, for everybody. Thanks.
I'd share an additional commendation as Florence Jackson can come up. She's been the awardee for the mayor's office as the pioneer woman award of the year. Florence Jackson was born in St. Louis, Missouri, moved to Los Angeles, and she was twelve-years-old, graduate of Manuel Arts High School, along with her husband Harold. They graduated in January and were married in December. They went back to school after three children were grown. She received an A degree from LA Southwest College and a BS in Business Administration from the University of Redlands while working at Pac Bell. She is retired from Pac Bell in nineteen ninety-six, then she received her master's degree from California State University Dominguez Hills in two thousand. After retiring, she determined and evaluated that most of the schools in the inner cities that were private schools were basically teaching grades K through five and six and K through eight. She determined that there was a need for a middle school, so she opened the inner-city college prep at Los Angeles for students in grades six to twelve in September two thousand and two. She started with only one student and now has three. She does everything from cleaning the restrooms to teaching algebra. She's a charter member of the eighth district Empowerment Congress, has been in a leadership position for eleven years. She was on the leadership team of the Southwest and Southeast Neighborhood Development Councils, the Standards Council, and the Safety Council. She's also coordinated for the adoption block program, and a member of the Los Angeles City Code Watch, and commissioner for the Los Angeles Department of Animal Services. United Methodist Church has been a member of her church for twenty-eight years, and a certified lay speaker for the United Methodist Church. She's held several positions in that church for the United Methodist Women, including vice president, president. She serves as treasurer, currently serving as president of the Los Angeles District of United Methodist Women, which consists of forty-one churches. Florence is a board member of United Methodist Church Youth Collaborative, California Pacific Conference, board member of the Urban Ministries, a board member of the, this is, Tormann Settlement Homes Incorporated in San Pedro, and the United Methodist Women Conference, represented to the World Federation of Methodist Women and United Church Women, a member of the Church Women's United. She volunteers to aid the ministry of the faith, United Methodist Church, and the food bank at MLK Hospital. And I'd like to present the mayor's nominee for the pioneer woman of the year, Mrs. Florence Jackson.
I have two of my students here with me. I have Mr. Duhan on this side and Mr. Hudson on the other side. I do address my students by their surname. I must say that because of the city council is where I am right now. I retired and I got cable TV just to keep up with my council and see what was going on down here. And while flipping the channel, I saw where I could go back to get my MBA and do part of it on the internet. After doing that, I found myself opening this school. I did my paper on that, and this is where I am. There is a great need for students like this, and I have good role models for my young men. Thank you very much. Muchas gracias. Nope, that's okay.
Thank you very much for introducing the next pioneer woman award. If we could re pauses this program, let me acknowledge Councilmember Laban for a special presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I think you'll all agree, it's a great morning for the pioneer woman, and it's also special to recognize someone who's from a pioneer family. And our dear colleague Janice Han is celebrating her thirty-third birthday this Sunday, and I wanted to salute you from a very special cake. Please join me. Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday, dear Janice, we truly love you.
Mr. Laban, you have a knife for that?
I have a cuchillo for that.
Mr. Laban, the members, thank you. There'll be cake for everybody. I hope you bought enough for everybody in council chamber.
Everybody, everybody, all the time, all right, everybody. And I thank you for letting me back to a special presentation.
While we begin to cut the cake, let me recognize our next pioneer woman award presenter, Councilmember Gro.
I'm pleased to join my colleagues today in honoring so many pioneer women. That we had a beautiful breakfast this morning up in the City Hall Tower with many of you to acknowledge the leadership of so many outstanding women in the city of Los Angeles. I'm pleased today to acknowledge Mary Lee Tierney as won an extraordinary woman and most deserving of the pioneer woman award. Mary Lee was born and raised in Long Island, New York, and after graduating from the State University College at New Palt, she taught school for two years in New York before packing everything she owned into her Volkswagen and heading to California. She attained, that's a pioneer, yes, she attained a master's degree in English from Cal State LA. For most of her life, she was a teacher of English and French and a high school librarian for the Glendale Unified School District. Due to a physical disability that made standing, walking for long periods of time very difficult, and the physical demands of working in classrooms, she decided to retire. But all of us who know Mary Lee, retirement is not in her vocabulary. Fortunately, she had both the computer and English skills to transition into her own business called Snoops about nine years ago. Originally, Snoops offered a range of services, but her specialty was editing and writing. Her writing endeavors include offering eight books on the history of Salton, writing for several magazines, and to inform readers about key community issues. In February two thousand and two, just before I was elected, the foothill leader, a Glendale-based newspaper that serves Salton to Hanga, decided to pull the plug on their newspaper. And this was really an extraordinary loss for the Salton to Hanga community. Mary Lee decided that she needed a new challenge after so many in her life, and decided to create a new newspaper, the Foothill Sentinel, which serves the communities of Salton to Hanga, Shadow Hills, Lakeview Terrace. As a new enterprise, Mary Lee has served as both publisher, editor, reporter, photographer, and business manager. And during its first year, it has enjoyed tremendous success. And you know when Mary Lee's coming in her little contraption over here, watch out, because if she's ready to get her story, she's going to come after you. She's been an active participant as well in various organizations, the CPAB, the Chamber of Commerce, and others in the Salton to Hanga. And we were very pleased, I had asked Mary Lee to bring copies of the Foothill Sentinel, which you all have on your desks. I hope that you will read it, it talks about many of the things that are happening in the city council and accomplishments.
that I want to thank the entire council for. Last week, well, recently anyway, you approved the removal of the debris from Hanson Dam Lake. It's extremely important to our communities and we thank you very much for doing that. I'd also like to add that my job as an editor has been made easier in terms of getting copies, because we have such a wonderful council person, and she keeps me very busy keeping up with all that she does for our district. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for our next presentation. Let me recognize Councilmember Z.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues and guests. I'm going to present a vest to the recipient, and there's a purpose for this. You can get, put this vest on first. And if you'll turn around and let's show the back, it has Harley Davidson, Black Hills, South Dakota. And there's the significance behind the vest, because our recipient, Rose Goldwater, when she became aware, being the Pioneer Woman from the 3rd District, asked me if I'd pick her up on my Harley Davidson and ride her in this morning, the Harley Davidson. So when I woke up this morning and listened to the news and learned that there was a tractor-trailer freight that flipped on the Ventura Freeway and the freeway was shut down and people couldn't travel from the West Valley to downtown, I said, this is a perfect day to ride my motorcycle to work. And since the weather was so beautiful, I was able to pick Rose Goldwater up at her home on my Harley Davidson. We're all of her neighbors out there, taking photographs. As the Pioneer Woman jumped on the Harley Davidson, and we went down to get to City Hall to a picturesque view of the San Fernando Valley through a roundabout way to get here in time for the breakfast that was conducted. And she was worried that we would be late. And after one pit stop at a Ralph's supermarket, because she doesn't ride Harley Davidsons that often, we made it here in time and then she had to change her wardrobe because she was wearing boots and she had the motorcycle attire and the helmet. She's a biker chick, so. Here's a photo of Dennis and the biker chicks, Rose Goldwater, and some of the ladies of the San Fernando Valley that participated in a skit we did at the most recent Fernando Award for Ruth Richter, who's the owner of a motorcycle shop. So it was with that spirit of bringing forth the group to show that our pioneer women from the San Fernando Valley, the old San Fernando Valley with the stagecoach and the horses, we've come up to contemporary times with motorcycles. Now, Rose Goldwater, the 2003 Pioneer Woman from the West San Fernando Valley. Rose was born in Detroit, Michigan, and married to Nat for 50 years, and her husband passed away. She has two daughters and one grandson. She is the president of G&amp;G Print Shop in Woodland Hills. And Rose received this Pioneer Woman from me because she's involved in basically anything and everything with the San Fernando Valley. Woodland Hills Ventura Boulevard Streetscape Committee, Chair, Community Advisory Board of West Hills Hospital, Member Calabasas Rotary, Member Calabasas Chamber of Commerce, Member United Chamber of Commerce of the San Fernando Valley, Member Board and Vice Chair of Special Events Woodland Hills Chamber of Commerce, Executive Vice Chair Foundation for Pierce College, Member Emeritus Board of Directors Pacific Lodge Youth Services, Chairman, Board of Directors West Valley Boys and Girls Club, and Member Executive Association of San Fernando Valley. Last year, Rose received the Fernando Award, the most prestigious award in the San Fernando Valley. And I know that there's other people who look at that award. And there he is, right over there, Lee Alfred, who is also a recipient for the Fernando Award, the most prestigious award in the San Fernando Valley. And Rose won that last year for over 30 years of volunteerism in the San Fernando Valley. 2001 Community Advocate Award, Westfield Chopping Town, 2001 Community Award Valley Women's Center, and she's received 11 additional awards for various organizations since 1978. She's a wonderful lady. She's a spirit of the San Fernando Valley with energy that is phenomenal, and any group that needs assistance and support is there for Rose Goldwater. She is a tribute, a wonderful person, a biker chick, a Harley lady, and all those wonderful things. And it's my honor to present to you, Rose, the certificate of commendation to you for being the 2003 Pioneer Woman and all the wonderful things you do for the San Fernando Valley and the people of Los Angeles. Many, many more years of productivity for you with all the groups you work with, and I know you're working with a number of programs you're working with out of my office. You're just a very special lady, and I'm honored to be here to present this to you. And I must add, just remember that I met Rose many years ago when I was a police officer, and I arrested her one day. I arrested Rose one day, many years ago, and put her in handcuffs and took her down to the station. And it was one of those programs where she volunteered to be arrested to get money to bail out on a worthy cause. So that's how I arrested Rose Goldwater. So she's always been there for the good of the community. God bless you, Rose, and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Dennis. Dennis has become an inspiration to me. He's a wonderful, wonderful person, humanitarian, and a great council person. And it was my pleasure today to take that wonderful ride on his Harley, and I told him I'll be his honorary biker chick anytime. I thank all of you for this, and you, Dennis, especially, for this wonderful, wonderful honor. And I have many more years to give, so take when you can. Thank you.
Thank you very much for our next award presentation. I recognize Councilmember Grill.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my very great pleasure to, I've been doing this for a long time, as you know, and it's my great pleasure to introduce you today, a woman who is a particularly worthy recipient of this award and also fits really nicely into a whole chain of wonderful women who received this before and many more will receive it in the future. Maritza Varela De Aran is the Director of Casa Esperanza in the 6th District. Casa Esperanza, I want to talk about Casa Esperanza first, and then I'm going to tell you why she's so remarkable. Casa Esperanza is an organization that was started by the Immaculate Heart Community as part of the Blythe Street Project. And a number of you will remember that several years ago, actually for a number of years, Blythe Street got singled out as perhaps the most troubled street in the city of Los Angeles. Of course, we have many troubled areas, but Blythe Street really had a lot of problems. So the Immaculate Heart Community said, well, we're in business and try to help people, and let's set something up that will really help people. And so they have a program which Maritza runs, which does an enormous range of things to help children in particular, but to help children, you have to help their whole families. And this program helps kids get out of gangs. They even have, for example, a tattoo removal program, because as you know, kids get impulsive and they find out later that tattoo can be a real problem for them. We help them get rid of the tattoo. They get the tattoo removal by engaging in community service, parenting classes, family classes, after-school enrichment, and the Casa Esperanza also runs a free community health clinic. So Maritza's role is to be the liaison between all of these people, all the families in the neighborhood, and the services provided by their organization, but also provided by the city and the county and everybody else. And if you remember the problems of Blythe Street, you realize this is a very big job. Now, this is not a woman who just arrived on the scene and said, "I'm on my hands and so I'm going to get involved in my community." Maritza is a product of after-school programs. She is one of the first people in her family to actually finish school. She's the first one to go to college. You don't get to do that easily. That's hard work to get there. And she credits after-school programs when she was in them as teaching her that there is many, there are many more things you can do with your life and many wonderful things to do with your time. And we are actually delighted that somebody is able to pay her enough so she can support herself while she does this. So Maritza, I wanted to say thank you. Let me just ask you something here. No, we got it. That's basically it. We have a lot of work to do there. We're working now on five. By the way, you can all help. We are working on finding Casa Esperanza a new home, because the apartment building in which they have been located is not going to rent to them anymore. And we're actually trying to expand a park there, so we're gonna have to buy a couple of apartment buildings. So we are looking for space nearby. We think we found one. And the permits for the space have to come through, and just in case they're not done by the time I leave, counting on you guys to finish the job. So Maritza, I wanted to say thank you, first of all, for all the work you do for thousands of people, young people, old people, everybody in between. I've seen them enjoying themselves. We do everything from Christmas to Halloween to after-school to all those other things. And none of this happens, and then, you know, there's the inevitable financial crisis. This is the woman who hangs in there, comes around, tells you what she needs, makes sure somebody helps find it, and keeps the place going. This is for you, and these are for you. And I'm taking a glass of glass.
Before we hear from Maritza, I just want to take the liberty of saying a few words as well. Maritza's wonderful. I used to represent Blythe Street prior to redistricting, and you're absolutely right. She was one of the previous award recipients, and her nervousness said, you know, being a pioneer means being out front, and that's scary. Well, it's absolutely scary, and it's, I heard it somewhere, it's not brave if you're not scared. But with all that Blythe Street has had to contend with over the years, from the violence to the gangs to the drug dealing, to the poverty and the infrastructure concerns, the spirit of Maritza, the spirit of Casa Esperanza has been the beacon of hope, the beacon of progress in that community. It was really a pleasure and an honor to work alongside you while I represented the area. And even though you're not in my district now, you know you can count on me as a friend, but I want to share just one quick story that I think really describes that strength of spirit and determination, though it was impossible several years ago to change the name of the street, Blythe Street, to Amber Way. And it was turning around the community as a way to sort of disarm the violence and the gang members there, because who's gonna tattoo Amber Way on their chest and try to intimidate others by being the Amber Way Boys or something like that. So that process was in motion prior to my election. When I got into office, the department finally came to me and said, we're ready to go with the signs, we're ready to go with the paperwork changes. And I said, you know, before I do this, let me check one more time with Maritza. And Maritza said, no, don't change the name, because to change the name to Amber Way is a symbol of giving up, that we couldn't play Blythe Street, that we have to drag another way, and we're not ready to give up yet. We want to keep Blythe Street. We will turn it around and make it a good name, and that's certainly what they're doing. And I think that just speaks for her commitment, her hard work, her talent, her passion, and she is a pioneer, not just for Blythe Street, but for the entire city of Los Angeles. Congratulations. Councilmember Z.
I just also want to congratulate you. I can show you that in the early 90s, there was a red dot on the map, and we looked at the whole city, and there was Blythe Street. And you can see the poverty. You can see what was going on back then. We looked at today's map. That red dot has spread, not only in the valley, but in the city. So colleagues, I just want to share this thought with you, because without you, without Maritza, without folks like you, we won't be able to take on this challenge. And it's with your guidance and your effort that we, as councilmembers, need to reassess our budgets, reassess our contracts, find ways to create jobs for young people. So we can deal with this issue directly. And we need to continue building on the accomplishments that Councilmember Colanter, Councilmember Hernandez, and all the other councilmembers have started. That needs to change, that needs to grow, and improve on those policies. So thank you very much for all that you do.
On behalf of Immaculate Heart Community that started Casa Esperanza, the Blythe Street Project, and myself, I truly thank you, Councilmember Ruth Colanter and Councilmember Alex Padilla, for your wonderful remarks, because with all this, Casa Esperanza would not be possible. I'd like to acknowledge four wonderful ladies that are here with me that are members of the Immaculate Heart Community. So I said they started the Blythe Street Project. Dr. Teresa Benegas, if they can please stand up. And the President, and the President of the Immaculate Heart Community, Rosalina Baldonado, and Ms. Pedrosa, and Ms. Caballero. Again, I'd like to dedicate this acknowledgement to the women of Blythe Street, that on a daily basis, not only do they face challenges of lack of appropriate housing, having food on their table to offer to their children, but to offer a safe place to live. So I thank all of you who are up here that help us, people like me, to, when we're putting together programs or events that help us to make our programs possible with funding and so forth, all this would not be possible without your support. So thank you. I thank you very, very much. I feel very privileged to be, to have been selected among such a group of distinguished women. Thank you.
Mr. LaBange.
Your honorary Ruth, but I also want to thank the Immaculate Heart Nuns, who have such a great history of activism. Give them a big hand for all the work the Immaculate Heart Nuns have always done.
Thank you, sisters, and thank you, Brother LaBange. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members. Kathy Stark really exemplifies what the Pioneer Women Awards is really all about. She's a lady who worked long and hard for not just the family, but the community. Over the years, she's been dedicated to the city of Los Angeles from the very beginning. Born in Los Angeles and currently lives in a house that belonged to her grandmother. It's a beautiful house, Third Avenue, in the Ruel'ship Park neighborhood of Los Angeles. I've been there and knocked on the door, always well-received. The children were young, they were in a carriage. I remember seeing her in the front porch, every talk about those bonds in the veteran house. You just have to go by there and take a look. She's married for 19 years with two teenage children. She works as a realtor and is currently going to school part-time to complete a bachelor's degree in psychology. Kathy enjoys working as an activist in the community to preserve and enhance the quality of life for all, totally unselfish. Kathy's passion lies with working for children and kids with special needs. Too many people don't pay attention to the ones with special needs. They're the ones who need help the most. Kathy realizes that. All kids are good kids at heart. They just have issues and sometimes they get mixed up with the wrong crowd, as she puts it. Her hopes are to open a teenage center throughout Los Angeles where teenagers have a safe place. Yeah, they use the word hangout. Get tutoring, counseling, learn life, and job skills.
As President Members, Kathy Stark really exemplifies what the Pioneer Women Awards is really all about. Here's a lady who worked long and hard for not just the family, but the community. Over the years, she's been dedicated to the city of Los Angeles from the very beginning. Born in Los Angeles and currently lives in a house that belonged to her grandmother. It's a beautiful house. Third Avenue. In the Wilshire Park neighborhood of Los Angeles. I've been there and knocked on the door. Always well received. The children were young there in the carriage. I remember seeing her in the front porch. Every talk about those bonds in the middle of the house. You just had to go by there and take a look. She's married for 19 years with two teenage children. And she works as a realtor. And is currently going to school part-time to complete a bachelor's degree in psychology. Kathy enjoys working as an activist in the community to preserve and enhance the quality of life for all. Totally unselfish. Kathy's passion lies with working for children and kids with special needs. Too many people don't pay attention to the ones with special needs. They're the ones who need help the most. Kathy realizes that. All kids are good kids at heart. They just have issues. And sometimes they get mixed up with the wrong crowd, as she puts it. Her hopes are to open a teenage center throughout Los Angeles where teenagers have a safe place. Yeah, they use the word hangout. Get tutoring, counseling, learn life and job skills. And work on what it takes to become a productive member of society as an adult. And work on life issues that they come about. Some of the community and voluntary experience includes working with the community, Neighborhood Association, and the council office, to make sure that the economic development of the neighborhood and the surrounding areas are planned out in a way that they are conducive to the neighborhood, not intrusive. For example, recently, Kathy, along with a tremendous effort of the community members, were on defeating a proposed McDonald's at the northeast corner of Alepic and Crenshaw. That's where the neighborhood councils come in. And that's why elected officials must pay attention to what the neighborhoods say. If I got the word that they didn't want that McDonald's there, then my position's always been, what they don't want, I want. What they want, I want. And I oppose it as well. Kathy also worked on traffic and parking issues, quality of life issues, neighborhood beautification, has an interest in keeping the integrity within the neighborhood, working with her senior lead officers, tracking and working with agencies to defeat graffiti and takers, issuing neighborhood alerts and making sure that information is disseminated to other communities members to create a stronger neighborhood bond, increase crime, and increase the quality of life for all. Well, she just has a, Kathy has a number of organizations that she's currently a member of and past member. The Wilshire Park Association, the president, Mid-Wilshire Neighborhood Council, Wilshire Park Association representative, Wilshire Community Police Advisory Board, Third Avenue Block Club, American Red Cross, and Super CPR. Weekend, she was CPR instructor. How about that? Community activists, Organization of Community Block Club, Los Angeles Unified School District, selection committees, advocates for children with special needs, and the list goes on. We just, we've been here all day talking about all of Kathy's accomplishments. Of course, the job well done. And I'm very pleased to present to Kathy Stark the commendation for Pioneer Woman of the Year 2003. And I might add, Mr. President, Members, this is the 16th time I've done this. We all are term limited, those of us who've been here for more than eight years. But I might add that there's not one member of this council today sitting who'll have an opportunity to present the Pioneer Woman of the Year Award for 16 years, henceforth. Term limits, they can only do it for eight times. But I'm pleased to be amongst those like Mr. Burnson and Ms. Colanter and others who before us have been presented to you my last time, most memorable time as an officer, as a certificate, to you, Kathy Stark, as the Pioneer Woman of the Year 2003.
And the bouquet of flowers. Mike Pitagoras.
Oh, that's a beautiful bouquet. Okay, I'll meet you there.
Well, I'd like to say that I am truly touched by this award. And it takes a lot to touch me. And I couldn't have done it without the help and the support from my husband, Bill, and my parents, and my kids, and also all of the community members that are very active and involved in our neighborhood and with the Neighborhood Council, and also all of the staff members of Council District 10's office and Nate Holden himself. And I'd like to say thank you one more time. And I'm very honored to receive this award. Thank you.
Congratulations, and thank you for coming down. I'd like, at this point, to ask Councilmember Burnson to recognize him for his presentation to Pioneer Woman of the Year in Council District 12. Husbands are allowed, but not required. Mr. Burnson.
Yes, Members of the Council. It's my distinct pleasure today to honor Arlene as our Pioneer Woman of the Year. I've had the pleasure of knowing her for, God, I guess it's probably over 30 years. I've had the experience of knowing her husband for the same period of time. And I don't know if that's been as pleasant, but they've both been stalwarts of our community. I'm not going to talk about, the only thing that I'm going to talk about her husband is the fact I'm going to give her credit for putting up with him through all these years. But she managed to do that, raise two terrific sons, Crenshaw and Bart, who are both a credit to her community, in spite of Lee. And let me just give you, you know, I've got a whole file here. I'd love to take the rest of the afternoon if I was going to read all of it. But I'm going to highlight it. Arlene has served as a teacher for many years. She served as a teacher at Kirk of the Valley. She was also a chair of Community Liaison for Assemblywoman's Community Support Organization, Client Services and Event Coordination for the Jewish Vocational Services. She taught at Miss Paula's School. She was a caseworker for the Los Angeles Department of Social Services, a director of Community Liaison Council of Encino-Tarzana Regional Medical Center, and tester and teacher at Sylvan Learning Center in Tarzana. She has extensive experience in event planning, fundraising for charitable, nonprofit community organizations, and training and experience in sociology and social work. Among her accomplishments are, and I'm just going to highlight this because it goes on and on. She served as PTA co-president, coordinated various seminars and fund developments, substantive programs for nonprofit community organizations, handled an extensive caseloads of clients and assisted in providing housing, medical care, supplementation of food for underprivileged needy families, volunteer on charitable boards, organizations, state commissions for the beneficial purpose of helping make our lives and our communities better. This organizational thing goes on and on also. But I'll give you the highlights. President Oliver Wendell Holmes, Junior High PTA Association, member of the Board of Directors, Executive Board for Mad About Rising Crime, which is Mark, member of the Board of Directors of the Sherwin-Forrest Homeowners Association, one of our leading homeowners groups in the 12th District, officer and member of Directors, Executive Board of California State University in Northridge Alumni Association, Commissioner, California State Women's Commission and the California State 20th District, Senate District 20th Advisory Council, founding member of Board of Directors of Kid Safe, Commissioner, California State Public Safety Commission, appointed by Assembly Member and Chair of the Assembly Public Safety Commission by Bob Hertzberg. You remember him, don't you, Bob Hertzberg? Member of the Board of Directors of San Fernando Valley Chapter, American Diabetes Association, committee member of City of Los Angeles Volunteer Festival, opportunity through Education Scholarship Fund, Children's Museum Commissioner, Commissioner, San Fernando Valley Advisory Commission, chaired and co-chaired throughout the years many charitable, political, and a few political, I must admit. And other events, endeavors to support persons, causes, and organizations. Participated in other community organizations such as Penny Lane. She received numerous awards and recognition. She was a graduate of the University of Arizona, Cal State University in Northridge. She has a BA in sociology and a lifetime teaching credential. West Valley Occupational Center and Calhoun Traffic School. She was born in travel. Isn't that what I said? No, okay. Traffic School, Travel School, close. She was born and raised in Southern California, raised and resides, lifetime in San Fernando Valley. It says happily married to the same husband for 32 years. I have, you know, I have to take that with a grain of salt, Lee. But she put up with it. Co-parented two wonderful college degrees, gainfully employed, and community active sons. Hobbies include exercise, physical training, reading, travel, movies, community organizational activities, particularly those for individuals in need in quiet time with family in need. And that's just the tip of the iceberg, Members of the Council. This family, both her and her husband, have been so involved with virtually every facet of activity of importance and community service in San Fernando Valley, as far back as I can remember. And that goes back a little ways. So it's with great pleasure that I would like to, number one, present this certificate to you, Arlene. You've got a few of these. They're all mine, all in this room for one wall, okay? And this bouquet, but first I'm going to give you the four. To thank you for all of the service that you've given to our community and to recognize the fact that you're receiving the recognition which you so deservedly deserve, okay? There you go.
And if you'd like to recognize, we have a couple of councilmembers that would like to add their good wishes, Arlene, as well. Councilmember Zine, first, to be followed by Councilmembers Weiss, Parks, Grul, and the list goes on.
Thank you, Mr. President. Arlene, it's a day that tribute is paid to you. Normally, we see Lee on the stage with his sidekick, David Fleming, at many of the events. And you're in the audience. And the beautiful wife who's been there, supportive in your own right, the activities you've been involved with. I know the teaching at the school in my district where you have been for many years an instructor and all your other contributions. I know your affiliation with the hospital and all you do in that arena. You don't get the accolades that Lee gets. He grabs the stage all the time. And this day is your day. And you deserve all of this because you have worked so hard in that community.
She's not one of your biker girls.
No, she's not a biker chick. But you could become one. It doesn't take much to become the biker chick. And I'm sure Lee wouldn't mind another biker chick. But really, congratulations to you. Well deserved. You are definitely a pioneer woman, a wonderful wife, and a wonderful mother to your children. I know both of you, the whole family, just great people. So congratulations from the bottom of my heart. Well, well deserved.
Mr. Weiss. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. Arlene, congratulations to you. You are extraordinarily deserving of this honor. And it's terrific to see you here today and to see you getting this recognition. It's great to see your family. You guys want to stand up on the stage? Be on TV? Come on, yeah.
My brother's here.
The Albert family. Stand up there with her, guys. In the time I've had to get to know you and to get to work with you on my commission in the valley, I've just come to have the highest regard for you and for your, you have this tireless way of being involved in the community at the grassroots level and at the leadership level. It's delightful to see you here. So congratulations again, Arlene.
Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Arlene, I know you, the better half. And I'm going to just talk from a personal basis that Hal certainly has talked about all the things you volunteered for. And it's amazing you have that kind of time. But I think what's so important is that you've never lost sight of the importance of being a parent. You've raised your kids the proper way and have been, in addition to all of those volunteer issues, you've been a friend to so many people throughout the city, not just in the valley, working on those issues, but throughout the city. And I'm just pleased to add my voice that you're too young to be a pioneer, but that you've given this award and help. Congratulations for picking it.
Ms. Grul.
All right, I'd like to, sorry, then we'll let you speak. And I've had a chance to acknowledge Arlene earlier upstairs in the tower, but want to add to the many voices you've already heard around this city council horseshoe about the important contribution, Arlene, that you have made as an individual, as a mother and a wife, but particularly as someone who has given back to the community. And we're so pleased that Hal made this nomination today. And just want to say congratulations. And to put up with Lee. Well, we all acknowledge that, too.
Mr. Garcetti.
Last but not least, I wanted to add my voice as well. I didn't get the chance to do it upstairs. I was supposed to congratulate you. I know our families have been friends for some years, but you really embody the best of Los Angeles. I think not only San Fernando Valley, but the entire city in being a voice for compassion, a voice of activism. You really embody what a pioneer woman is about. And I just wanted to add my voice. Congratulations.
Mr. Labange.
Thank you, Mr. President. Congratulations to you. Very nice presentation. But I also want to salute your family and the teamwork that takes so important in any community life. You've truly done so much for so many. Congratulations to you, Arlene. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. That and putting up with Lee all these years.
I would like to thank everyone for all their comments and especially to Hal Burnson for this great honor. And it really means a lot to me this year because this is Hal's last year. So thank you, Hal, for saving the best for last. And I will, of course, continue to be as active, if not more active, in the community. And we'll try and make a difference. So thank you all again for this great honor. It really means a lot to me.
Thank you very much. And last, but certainly not least, Councilman of the great 4th District, Mr. Tom Labange.
All right, Mr. President. It is true that we're last, but not least. But I saved the best for last. Is that all right there, councilmembers, all right? Estelle Bush is right here. And I want all her pals who've waited all this time to come down and stand behind because we're going to take executive privilege since we're last, because you've got great members of your troop here. But Estelle was born in New York in the Bronx and learned much about life in the streets of New York. Coming out to California in 1943, arriving at Union Station in the rain. She came here to Southern California. And on several days, she and her husband, as they made their new life in Los Angeles, would explore the great area of Southern California, driving an old roadster in the hills, in the Hollywood Hills, and picturing the side of Laurel Canyon and Coldwater Canyon. It's got a great history right here with Estelle. But Estelle is like what's so important. She talks about the arts. She is an artist. She is one who brings together people. She is an actor. She's a director. She's someone who inspires others. And all these are her inspirations behind, among the throngs of others. Over the years, she worked as an actress with Lloyd Bridges, with Dennis Weaver, Judd Hirsch, and Eva Milton-Burrow. She has a great history in her work. She also has been very involved in women's issues and in the forefront of pushing women's issues in film, on the stage. And has been very active in roles in that area with Afra and Sae. She also developed a long time, with a longtime friend, and I'm going to cheat here, which I don't usually like to do, but I want to do that, with Alice Joseph. You wrote "One Woman's Show, A Woman's Place", "Window Paints, and Failure Is Impossible", which is my favorite title of your work, "Failure Is Impossible", playing successfully in theaters, not only here in California, but in England and in Scotland. She became the administrative director of the Theater Alliance, which was formed in the valley. Also very involved with the League of Los Angeles Theaters. She works very closely with everyone in the art community. But in 1978, she joined the, I want to say Syn...
Synthaxis.
Synthaxis Company as the administrative director. Synthaxis Theater Company. And over this time, she's had the wonderful ability to work in the NoHo district in North Hollywood in pushing the arts and the theater there, so much, which is so important in any part of the community there. She was also very pleased to be honored by our former colleague, Joel Wax, being an outstanding person. And Joel was the great champion of the arts, and he left a little of that for us to make sure we carry that mantle. But it's so nice in your resume, you speak about your love of Joel and what he did for the arts, and if only we could do so much. But the big thing that Estelle did is in 1978, the great Department of Water Power was abandoning their little office there on Lakeview Boulevard. A two-story building, I know, but it's an office. You know, Water Power has big plans and big reservoirs. It's a little building compared to Water Power, so that's what they thought. But they didn't know that it was a little building. This was a great spot that one day could be an art center. And Estelle and others were the champions to work with the Department of Water Power and Joel Wax and John Farro and others to create and save what is now the Lakeview Art Center on Lakeview Boulevard in the heart of the NoHo Art District. And that is truly where their home is now, as is others, at that art district. If it wasn't for your fight to save that public building, which is a beautiful art deckel building, similar to the beautiful one on Daly Street in Mr. Reyes's district on the old Water Power, which had beautiful little offices around, and they're now beautiful centers. And this is a beautiful art center. So I'm just pleased to be the last today to recognize someone who's extremely special. And I'm going to make up for all of you for keeping you so long by doing some extra special for you. But Estelle Bush truly is a pioneer woman. If it wasn't for women, us guys wouldn't be here. God bless every woman, I'll tell you that for sure. But also, if it wasn't for women who work in the arts, because I like what was said the other night at the Oscars, was said there by the Oscar Award-winning actress, Nicole Kidman, "Art is important." And it truly is, and all the challenges that we have, it's the arts and the humanities that get us through today and keeps us sane. So I just want to ask you all on this day, the last day of the month, when the mustard is so beautiful in the Santa Monica Mountains and the winds are blowing and hopefully knocking down the wires, not taking away anybody's problems there, but to salute Esther, Estelle Bush, excuse me.
Esther was so interesting.
I know. I know Esther was your original name. I'm talking too fast in here.
That's okay.
To salute you for what you've done for so many years as a truly pioneer woman of Los Angeles, and thank all your friends for coming down, and ask you for a few remarks at this time. Mr. President, big hand, Estelle Bush.
Thank you, thank you, thank you all. This is about my fourth time in this chamber, and I've received many honors from council president Farro and others. And so I go back to Mayor Bradley, who presented us with a plaque when we were going to Scotland to represent Los Angeles at the Edinburgh Theater Festival. And he sent a letter of commendation for us to the Lord Mayor of Edinburgh. So I feel very much at home, and I want to thank you all for this great honor. And I want to thank my new council member, Tom Labonte, who ever since he took office has been most helpful and gracious and supportive of Synthaxis Theater Company. He has given us a council civic grant to bring our program, an after-school program for teaching, not teaching, but expending on the essence of reading, and we do what we call storytime, which we read and reenact stories to the children. And also, I want to say that we have always felt that Synthaxis Theater Company has a mantra. Theater is an educational tool, and that's what we use throughout. So thank you again for this great honor, and I want to thank my colleague...
Introduce him.
This is Gabrielle Ametol. And she works with me in the after-school program when we read and draw. She's a great actor, and she does all this improvisational... We don't even know what stories the children will pick. And so it's completely improvisational for us, but we enjoy it tremendously. And this is my daughter-in-law, as well as the vice president of the Synthaxis. And this is my longtime colleague and art playwright in residence, Mary Maka, the actor, the Mary Maka. A PhD. And this is my wonderful associate, and is also an associate producer of the company, an actress. We're teaching together now. Oh, yes, 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 and she's my co... And she helps me with the teaching. Her name is Justine Visone.
Before we let you go, I want to recognize Councilmember Parks.
What did he say?
Thank you. We want to thank the council and...
Councilmember Grul?
I just wanted to also add my thanks and congratulations, and even though the theater's in Tom's district, you know, she's a constituent of mine. So I appreciate you acknowledging me.
Yeah, I do, both districts.
You do. So I just want to add to Mr. Labonte's honoring you today. Congratulations and how happy we are for all that you've done for the entire city and for a particular community and that you've done in the theater. And as someone who worked for Tom Bradley and how important man he was as mayor of the city, and I'm glad he had acknowledged you a long time ago.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, darling.
Thank you, Mr. Labonte.
Thank you.
I believe that concludes the Pioneer Woman of the Year Award Presentations. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Frances, Belinda, Garcetti, Grul, Han, Holden, Labonte, Ms. Caspino, Pacheco, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Sign Padilla, thirteen members present and in accordance with the president.
Thank you very much. Before beginning with the matter appearing on today's agenda, members, if I can ask for your attention, please. I know we finished with the formal presentations of today, but had another bit of news, and this is a surprise. As you all know, there was a little fanfare when I turned 30 last week, but a member of my staff, someone you're all familiar with, is turning 30 this week, and I wanted to say happy birthday to my right hand here in the horseshoe, Laura McClellan. She's not a council member, but she whips all of you into shape. This is as good as anyone, so happy birthday, Laura. Quick words?
Thank you.
She said, "Thank you and be here on time." Okay. Madam Clerk, first order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Grul moves, and Mr. Parks seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mrs. Zine moves, and Mr. Garcetti seconds.
Before beginning of the regular agenda, there are several items that have been requested to be continued. Item number one, a request from Councilmember Reyes and the Attorney's Office to continue that matter to April 25th.
Members, request to continue item number one. Is there any objection? Seeing none, item one is continued.
Also, a request from Councilmember Reyes to continue item number 31 for one week, and that would be April 4th.
Members, request to continue item 31. Also without objection. Mr. Pacheco, did you wish to recognize?
Mr. President, item number 10 should be receiving filed. We took care of this on Wednesday through a prior action to supersede today's item number 10, so it's not necessary. So we just receive and file item number 10.
Okay. As we consider that, item will consider receiving filed, Madam Clerk.
Next items, Mr. President. Items two through 12 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Items two, three, four, six, seven, and nine, reports have been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Okay, items two through 12. Now before us, as we heard from Mr. Pacheco, we request that item 10 be received and filed, so that will be consideration when we open the roll. Mr. Reyes, on these items?
I'm sorry, I was... For another item, I'll wait.
Okay. Members, items two through 12, public hearings have not been held in committee. A motion from the board would be required to reopen the public hearings. Mr. Holden?
Item eight, neighborhood councils, the Pioneer Woman of the Year for the 10th district, would like to have the privilege of just making a comment and then moving on. So on my time, if you were to grant me that privilege, on my time, she can just make a comment.
Let's call that special, dispense with the content items, and then we'll come back to that. So let's call item eight special on the balance of items two through 12. Are there any other specials? Mr. Parks?
I can't hear you, Mr. Parks. Eighteen and eighteen.
Okay, we're almost there, but I'll make a note of that when we get to that person of the agenda. Any other specials? Items two through 12, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those matters are approved. Item 10 is received and filed.
Next item, Mr. President. Items 13 through 34 are items for which public hearings have not been held.
And we do not have requests from members of the public to adjust the council on these matters. We shall deem the public hearing satisfying. We also have a request from Councilmember Parks to call items 15, 16, and 18 special. Any other specials? Thirty-two, call special by Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I'm not sure if it's appropriate this time, but we can send item 23 to committee.
Okay, request to send item 23 back to committee. Is there any objection? Seeing none, item 23 is referred back to committee.
Which, Plumb?
Plumb, yes. Mr. Garcetti?
We make nine forthwith, please.
Fourthwith on number nine. Any other specials? Items 13 through 34. Ms. Perry? Any other specials, members? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved.
And there is an amended motion on 33 that was distributed, and I believe that is just technical in nature.
Technical in nature. Item 33 is excluded as amended. I believe, Ms. Perry, which is item 35, special. Item 35 has not had a public hearing.
No, it hasn't.
Mr. President, I just wanted to make a small amendment, and I think the 13th district is okay with that.
Okay, let's make it now verbally.
I just wanted to add, House District Nine for a pilot program in this program as well.
Then that would change the ordinance, and the ordinance would have to come back again for first reading.
I don't know. What do you think we should do? What do you want to do?
Mr. Garcetti?
Well, there is a amendment as well, which is a separate thing, which is, I think, is technical in nature, so I just wanted to cite that. And my understanding is, even with that change, it has to come back. Is that correct? In a week or something like that?
City Attorney concurs.
Would that be enough time to support great council District Nine in as well?
Our understanding is it would take about three weeks.
Do you know why it takes so long?
To research it for, to review it for formality. I spoke with Ms. Sidor Cardenas this morning on this matter.
Well, let's do this. If Mr. Garcetti's amendment requires this... Hold on, colleagues. Mr. Garcetti, if your amendment requires that this be come back in a week for a first consideration again, let's agendize it as such. We'll agendize it with the council District Nine language also. If the ordinance is believed not ready, we'll deal with it then, but let's give the City Attorney a chance of having it ready within one week's time period.
Thank you.
So we'll make those changes, and do we need a vote, Madam Clerk, or do we just carry this over for a week?
That could be unanimous, considered a unanimous vote.
Okay, unanimous. That is item 35. Next item, please.
Going back to the items called special, item number eight was called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item number eight.
You have my time, Mr. Garcetti. Woman of the Year.
Good morning, and thank you. Good morning, councilmembers. I'd like to speak just for a moment regarding the LA Unified School District and the neighborhood councils in regards to the building of new schools throughout Los Angeles. The city of Los Angeles is in need of new public schools to accommodate the influx of children that have come here and that have been born in Los Angeles. I live in a community called Wiltshire Park, and we currently have a new elementary school going into our neighborhood. LA Unified School District has improved, much improved, their outreach, communication through the neighborhood so much more now because we've gotten involved and also have had the neighborhood council involved, that I do urge you to vote yes on this. It does make a big difference to have the representation from the neighborhood council as well as neighborhood associations. And once they're involved, it does give us, as citizens of Los Angeles, better leverage to work with LA Unified School District and not to just have them come in and ramrod through what they want to do. And that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darke. Mr. President, that's an high vote.
Other members wishing to be heard?
On the fifth of April, there's a conference that the mayor's having, and they're going to discuss a very issue, how the LA Unified works with neighborhoods and side of schools. So I think it's a very timely matter, and I think, Councilmember Han, for bringing this vote.
Thank you very much. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item number 15, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just had a point of clarity. It looks like this is two grants, the one four million dollar grant that was due March 2003, and I was just wanting the staff to tell me if we were too late to apply. It looks like the larger portion is due amid 2003, your summer.
Is the department staff here to answer questions? Is the appropriate staff here to answer questions?
I don't see any staff.
Okay. Mr. Parks, did you wish to hold this matter on the desk, or did you wish to continue until next week?
Maybe we can get some staff here, because it looks like it's an urgency for at least a portion of it, but it looks like from the document that we've missed the due date or we're very close to missing it.
Does committee chair have some helpful guidance here for information? Why don't we hold this matter on the desk, but, Mr. Parks, we have about five minutes before we reach the end of the agenda, so if we don't hear or see department staff here in short order, we may have to continue these matters. Ms. Zine?
I also have some questions. I think maybe General Services needs to respond regarding item number 15.
Okay. Well, let's hold this matter on the desk temporarily, so everybody make a quick question.
The grant, and then, but then come back, because time is everything, and then come back.
Well, do you want to continue until Tuesday?
I don't know. There may be time. There may be time.
I'm sorry, what? Hold on, folks.
The question is, on the grant, it ends as March. This is almost the end of March.
Do we require everybody to order?
The first four billion shows as of March 2003 is the due date, and it looks like it's passed. I mean, or if you don't count the...
As I understand from council District 10 staff, we should move this, because then it might be a possibility of applying for it still in this month. And I think the applications may be close to ready. They just have to get authorization to actually submit.
Okay, well, let's hold this matter on the desk for about five minutes. If we can't get staff here quickly, and if by the end of the meeting or the agenda we haven't had appropriate staff here, let's make the call at that point in time.
And we do need General Service staff here on that, my end also.
That's what we're trying to accommodate. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 16, called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks?
I'd request, along with Councilmember Zine, that this be held over for two weeks for further legal review as to the issue of the service element of raising $400,000 in the ticket writing incentive.
Other members wishing to be heard? If not, then we're ready for a vote. Or continue for two weeks without objection. Next item.
Item number 18, called special by Councilmember Parks.
I was wondering if staff is here on 18. My question was that on the page two of the report, it shows that the city's going to pay a $50,000 fee for an audit of the fleet after the completion of the program. And what I'm concerned about is that it appears we're giving the grant to the operators of the program to do an independent audit to tell us whether the equipment is still in the best shape. It seems as though if we're going to do an audit, the city would be creating the audit independently, so we'd know clearly the machinery or the vehicles were properly cared for.
James Ogazaki, Assistant General Counsel, LIDOT. It's been customary for us, the department does not have the staff to do the network. So what we do is we ask the consultant to hire a third party, which we concur with, to evaluate the condition of the vehicles before the transfer is made to the new company. This is what we've been...
But the consultant is the one that's, we're paying the contractor, right?
The contractor will pay them, that's correct.
My concern is that if we're going to have a true audit, it would appear that we wouldn't give the function to the people that we're paying the contractor, that we would create an independent audit from the city, so that we're clear that we're getting an independent group to tell us how, what condition the vehicle is.
David Rapinski, Department of Transportation. James is correct. This is a practice that was used before. Actually, it's a subcontract to the prime contractor. So that subcontract has primary responsibility to report back to the city. So in essence, you have is, it's a pass-through, more or less. The prime basically solicits a proposal, we approve who selected, and then we basically act as the prime dealing directly with the independent consultant. So they produce an independent document that hopefully isn't tainted by the time that basically they go in, they go through this thorough record inspection as well as a vehicle inspection, and report back to us directly.
Who hires the sub?
Ultimately, we approve the prime's selection of the sub.
That's exactly what my point is. It appears that if we want true independence, we're going to spend $50,000. It should be something from the department selecting an independent auditor in our behalf it should be something from the department selecting a independent auditor in our behalf versus allowing the prime to select a, uh, a sub, and then we agree with it. That's my concern.
We understand exactly what you're saying, uh, we'll take a look at our procedure, but we found this to be an acceptable procedure for us, as David explained. Fifty thousand dollars is a very small contract, and these guys have about a ten million dollar contract, and at the very end, we just want to make sure what we give to the next contractor is in the correct position, because we go through arbitration and settling the contract amount, what's due to them, and so forth. But I understand exactly at this point, and we'll take a look at possibly modifying our, uh, condition in which we would do the, the exit audit at the very end of the contract.
Because the fifty thousand is a small contract, as long as you have the money. It's not a small contract.
If you don't have...
So, and I think the independence and the objectivity is what we're looking at. It would appear that we'd be at arm's distance from the prime to make sure we truly get the vehicles back in safe order and that they are in the condition that the audit details.
I understand, I think we have a way to do that by bringing on a contractor that would do all the exit audits of all the vehicles, so he would be a sizable contractor, he would look at all of our contracts, not just this particular contract, but the other, this ten to twelve contracts that we do have. That would make the, I think, the bid a much more, I guess, sizable one for these people to bid on. I appreciate your concern, and we'll take care of it.
Ms. Zine?
Thank you. Who owns the vehicles?
The city.
Does the controller get involved in this at all?
Not to my knowledge per se, no. The controller does not.
Now, why wouldn't we have the controller who conducts audits be involved in any aspect, since that is the expert from the city departments that does audits? Because as I understand it, the contractor finds someone to do the audit, we confirm, verify, they do the audit. We don't include the controller's office, and clearly we want to change the way we do business to make sure it's clear, to make sure it's correct, to make sure there's nothing other than propriety. So why wouldn't we include the controller?
That's not a bad idea, but...
Well, I think, I think Councilmember Parks and her colleagues have wonderful ideas. We just need to implement these ideas through your department and other departments, because we keep saying we're changing the way we do business, and we need to change the way we do business, and an audit is very important when you're talking about vehicles liability to the taxpayers, since the question I asked, who owns the vehicles? The city's ultimately liable, whether that driver's competent or qualified, the city's responsible, since we own those vehicles.
Yes.
So we need to somehow include that in there and have a consultation from the controller's office, because that's what the controller does, is audits, and it would be appropriate to have the controller review to make sure that all the bases are covered, instead of going by the past practice, and as we see many times, litigation ensues, and we wonder why, because we didn't do things the way we should do. We have an elected controller who's very competent and qualified, who I think should be consulted when we're talking about an audit. Fifty thousand dollars, a lot of money or not a lot of money? How many vehicles are we talking about?
Sixty-six.
Sixty-six vehicles, there are sixty-six vehicles for fifty thousand dollars. That, to me, is a whole lot of money for sixty-six vehicles. It's fifty thousand dollars to audit the maintenance of the vehicles, the tires, the equipment inside. Fifty thousand dollars for sixty-six vehicles? I don't have a calculator, but how much does that come out for a vehicle?
It's actually two vehi, it's two inspections, and it's a final report. So you come in, you do a complete top and bottom inspection, you do a complete records inspection, and then you report the findings back to the city, and then the contractor's responsible make repairs on those, all those items that are identified as...
At his expense?
It's the contractor's expense. And then, once, and then the consul comes back to verify that all those items that are identified were in fact completed.
What are they, and I have some knowledge of vehicles. What are they examining? Are they examining the compression ratio? Are they examining the brake pads?
All of those things.
All of those things, and then some.
So how much are we paying per vehicle?
We pay on a brand-new, per vehicle for inspection, or to buy these vehicles when they're new?
No, no, no. We're paying fifty thousand dollars for an audit of sixty-six vehicles.
Yes.
And to do the report.
Yes.
And if anyone else has a calculator, what does that come out to be per vehicle? Ed, you're the mathematician.
Let me do a quick calculation.
Do a quick calculation. See how much we're paying per vehicle.
Sixty-six vehicles and, uh, it's, uh...
Maybe some of the students can add that. How much?
About, about three thousand five hundred dollars each time we inspect.
Thirty-five hundred dollars?
Right. We inspect twice.
Well, you say we're closing this out, we're doing an audit as we do this transfer, so we're going to audit the current company and the current condition of the vehicles, so the new provider will make sure that those vehicles are in order. So I understand why we're...
Well, the thing is, when the new contractor starts off, he knows exactly, just like when you rent a car at a, at a horse or whatever, they inspect your vehicle to make sure there's no dents and so forth.
They do a walk-around?
That's correct. Except in this case, they do the walk-around plus a detailed inspection of the records about the engine performance, brakes, body, seats, just everything. And they write it up, they, they...
So they have a check sheet?
They have a check sheet, that's correct. And they stand by that, then they, we take that checklist, give it to the contractor that's losing the contract, or the continuing the contract, and fix these things at their expense, based on the old contract amount they got. They restore everything to the, the condition that we want, before we accept. Then then we send them again and make sure, uh, auditor, make sure that the vehicles are repaired to the condition that we want, that we agreed to, then we accept it. If they don't, then obviously we have to make a, we make an adjustment at the very end of, if they say they don't want to fix it, you fix it, then we take that money out from the last month pay and so forth. And we do that as part of the contract.
So we're paying seven hundred dollars a vehicle to have it inspected?
About three thousand five hundred dollars.
We, we don't have personnel with the thirty-plus thousand city employees through our mechanical operations that could do some of that work. Why do we have to contract it out, and we can't use city employees for that? We've got, we've got personnel that work on vehicles, we've got personnel in the police department, we've got personnel in water and power, we've got personnel here at City Hall, we have, at the fiber tech, a full service.
We also have four mechanics that work for us, but the work of doing this is very extensive, lifting the vehicles up and so forth and so on, and, uh, it takes them about several, about a month for them to do the inspection on these vehicles, it's not just as quick as you think.
Yeah, I mean, if we had thousands of vehicles to inspect, you're looking at sixty-six basically buses, correct?
Yes.
And they're looking at sixty-six buses.
Yes.
And I don't know why we couldn't do that with our city resources, with our city personnel that we have assigned to that. We have mechanical operations within the city family. Why couldn't we do that, instead of giving it out to a private contractor?
Actually, there's two reasons that it worked really well for us in the past, because the first is its specialization for transit vehicles, and we've dealt with general services and other departments, and have often found that since public transit buses are different than other heavy-duty equipment, we've usually been given a lot of latitude in terms of handling our inspections in-house. The other issue is a third-party contractor using the latitude that, in fact, it's a transition to a new contractor, an independent opinion, a third, a separate document that basically details all the findings for each individual vehicle, has, has been truly successful in us transitioning a contractor over, a contractor over, rather than contractors then picking and getting that. One contractor, meaning perhaps the incumbent, arguing that the, the new contract would get something, or be settled with something they're not responsible for, so an independent voice has always been very effective for us.
We own the vehicles, that's the thing that's... We own those are vehicles, taxpayers own those vehicles. We have a city workforce that maintains the vehicles, whether it's police cars, police motorcycles, sanitation trucks. We own those vehicles, we maintain them all, we check them all, we give them maintenance on a regular schedule, and we don't know this is going to go out to another contractor anyway. It may stay with the same contractor. There's no assurance it's going to go out, go out for bid, the same contractor may happen, may keep those vehicles. And now we wasted fifty thousand dollars on what?
Ms. Zine?
Where's Mr. Holden? I'm sure he'll chime in on this one.
You can continue, there's no other members wishing to be heard. If we're leading up to a motion, or if we're leading up to...
Councilman, I would like to make a correction I made, I miscalculated, digit is off by ten. The inspection cost is roughly three hundred and fifty dollars per inspection, not three thousand five hundred. Bad math on my part.
Did you wish to make a motion, Ms. Zine?
I'd like to make a motion, Councilmember Parks is going to join me in this motion. We need to make a motion to, uh, to do something to correct the situation.
We will do that and make a report to the Transportation Committee on how we correct this.
Well, this was waived for transportation, so we never had a chance to hear this from Transportation.
No, but this happens on each and every contract that we do, we close up, we always award them.
Ms. President, could we, could we send this to Transportation Committee? Would that be an easy solution? I'd make a motion to send this matter to Transportation Committee.
May I request that we continue this contract, and I would agree to, to bring the item of auditing as a policy issue to T Committee as, on a separate item, but just move this project along.
Because I, I serve on...
I'm just asking for a month-to-month extension.
I don't have any problem with your month-to-month extension, I have a problem with the audit. I'd like to have that brought to Transportation Committee where we can have a dialogue on that particular issue, as long as you're month-to-month, I don't have any problem with that, but I do have a problem with the audit, and I think that needs to be reviewed by Transportation Committee.
Can we recognize Councilmember Parks?
Yeah, I second Mr. Okazaki's motion. No, I'm kidding you, I want to make that motion to send it to Committee, as just stated by the Assistant General Manager of Old Department. We're going to approve, approve what's in front of us, but break that out to come back, right, Jase? No?
Well, I'm asking that this particular item is low, but that I will bring any and all future items related to auditing of contracts as determined.
Well, I have a problem with your fifty thousand dollars on this particular, I have a problem, continue the month-to-month, you're going to continue the month-to-month.
All right, correct.
We'll approve that. My motion will be, don't spend the fifty thousand dollars on it.
Use city forces or whatever, come back to T Committee on it, I understand.
The Committee.
Okay, that would be, then A would be approved and adopted, and B would go back to Transportation Committee.
And A is the extension of the contract?
Yes.
And B is the audit?
B is the audit, right.
Great, that's fine.
I understand.
Is that understood? Is that clear?
And just understand...
Everybody in agreement?
I don't want to labor this quite, but we want to change the way we do business.
I understand.
Let's take a vote then. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Uh, Ms. Zine, Mr. Labarre is in Zine's motion, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President, item number thirty-two was called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just called this special to thank Councilmember Miss Kowski, who's not here today. I know that, I've talked many times in these chambers, and I think it's fitting that we had Pioneer Women's Day today, about the importance of the DART teams, the Domestic Abuse Response Teams, and the OJ, uh, CJP has recommended that we take some monies to be able to keep four of these DART teams, which are civilians that roll out with our police to domestic abuse response calls, and who are able to immediately intervene families, women, children, and give them a way out of abusive environments. It's really cutting-edge law and order, something that brings together community partners and law enforcement to make sure that our officers don't go back, maybe four or five times that same household. This will allow those four to continue, as we look for ways of making that a citywide standard. I wanted to praise Councilmember Miss Kowski for her leadership and thanking her for stepping up. We had a directive to the council, uh, from the council, rather, to look for that within the department, and I want to thank OCJP for doing that as well and making that happen. This will make our communities a lot safer, and I ask for your unanimous support. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Um, Mr. President, item number fifteen was being held on the desk, I believe, for the departments to report.
Okay, and I believe the departments are now represented here. Mr. Labarre?
As they come to sit down, please welcome from the University of Southern California School of Journalism, the Senior Division Class on Reporting, all with their, hold up your little tape recorders. All right, good job, Mike. Go God. What are they going to write about us?
Okay, Mr. Parks, you called this matter special, we have a department here.
I think you resolved it, the issue I was concerned with, had we missed the due date for the first part of the grant.
We have not yet. Gretchen Hardison from Environmental Affairs Department, our due date to send in the application is actually April fourth, is next Friday.
And then, Dennis, you had an issue on the gas tanks on item fifteen, placement, were they going to be placed?
Uh, you're with General Services? I'm sorry, it's my turn?
Mr. Garcetti's next on the queue.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Ms. Zine?
You're with General Services?
I'm with Environmental Affairs. We're submitting the application on behalf of the city.
Okay, there is a question that I raised regarding the dispensing of fuel here at City Hall, that General Services was looking at, these alternate vehicles, where are we going to be dispensing the fuel? And, and Tony, you know what I'm talking about, about dispensing fuel? And I don't want to talk about anything in detail regarding that, but that other matter, I don't think was ever resolved, and now we're going to compound it with something else, with alternate fuel? You know the first part I'm talking about?
I know the first part you're talking about.
That was never resolved.
That has not been resolved, we're still working with the other department on that issue.
And now we're going to add another component, and we've got all the regulations we need to make sure are done. I don't have any problem with doing it, but how are we going to do it with the combination we currently have a problem with?
I think this is a completely different issue. What they're asking for here is authority for a four million dollar grant to move forward with the program, and this program is being rolled out in the Valley, and I think this component, if I'm not, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Environmental Affairs will be in the South Los Angeles area, but this will get us some financing available to help offset some of the costs, and basically this is just a grant to the federal government to move forward with that alt fuel. There are a lot of significant issues with it, um, I've, I've discussed some of them with our fleet services, and certainly we're working closely with engineering. It is going to take some time to get some of those issues worked out.
Well, I think, and I don't have any problem with the environmental issues about supporting those cars and the alternate fuel, I have no problem, I support that. My concern is, we currently have a problem with fuel distribution that has not been resolved, and is this then, alternate fuel location going to be here, close by here, or at another site?
The application we're submitting will request one hundred fifty thousand dollars to contribute to the infrastructure cost for the South Central Sanitation Yard, which is in the, the General Services Department's infrastructure plan.
So that won't affect operations in the civic center?
No.
And those vehicles will not come to civic center as far as the garage here or house here?
No, they will not.
Okay, and then, I'm not going to bring the laborist point on the other matter, but we need to get that other matter resolved regarding the fuel distribution. And we've been waiting patiently, and I only flagged it because, Councilmember Parks, and I looked, you know, he flagged it, and I looked at it, and I said, wait a second, we already have a problem, yeah, it's solved. So we need to somehow move forward, and that's been a number of months before we brought that up, and I don't want to do a, a long debate on it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Garcetti?
So I will support this, I know you favor this, but I will explain to you later the other problems that are considered.
I just have one question, whether electric infrastructure was a part of the federal grant availability, of offsetting some of our zero emission vehicles, monies?
I don't believe it is a part of this particular grant, uh, it's for the, mainly for the natural gas fuels.
For natural gas.
For heavy-duty.
Okay, could we ask for a report back just on the feasibility of that? I know we have a great electric infrastructure, and we really led the way in that. There's a couple city-owned facilities or city-subsidized facilities, the garage at Hollywood and Islands, and also at the, um, Cinerama Dome, the Arc Lake, whether or not we could look at installation there for electric charging facilities, and we can talk about the funding of that as well, but we get a report back on that.
we can talk about the funding of that as well, but we get a report back on that. Two others, locations that a number of the community, electrical driving communities talked about too, is, no, the Cathedral has it, although they charge, and probably can't do anything about that. But also the Grove, whether or not that might be a great place, but there's a little bit of a hole in the infrastructure in the center of the city. But maybe in thirty days or something, people just let us know.
We'll talk to DDP about that in coordination with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, other members wishing to be heard. Seeing none, Madam Cook, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the votes.
Ten ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is President, item, uh, excuse me, it's time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, we have two speakers today. I believe it's Eddie Noble. Is it Matt Magette? Are you still with us, Mr. Mort Allen?
This is an issue that came up yesterday morning at a bike meeting, and I looked into it, and I was actually shocked that this passed through the cracks here. And I think when you all hear about this, you'll be as astonished as I would, and I imagine it's going to go to personnel Monday and bump Tuesday. What I found out is, started because I have attended a local Japanese restaurant, Matsuda, that has a conditional use permit for fifty seats, they have thirty-eight, and because they have a two-hour wait, it's the movie industry, they wanted to amend their conditional use permit at go to sixty seats. And I went to speak to Bob Jay, and I found out that it's great, you pay a forty-two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee, and you wait nine months for a SUP hearing. Now, the city code calls for it to be within seventy-five days. But Sir Rogers passed away last year, and there's another open position. So because of the two open positions, there's a nine-month wait to get any kind of conditional use permit. I further found out that each ZA brings in five hundred thousand dollars a year in fees, and with the overhead costs, salaries, and everything, it's two hundred, and the city nets three hundred thousand dollars on each zoning administrator. So I understand it's been held up in the mayor's office, so I really believe that that's critical, that we get these other two zoning administrators, and it goes to committee to be, so we can find out. I think that within the planning department, they have so many people assigned to issues like billboards and yard sales and other things, that there is the personnel in there to fill the positions, but it's not being done. And I think it's pretty serious. All right? I just want to take thirty seconds and mention one other thing. We had a major traffic accident this morning in the Valley where a route truck jackknifed the freeway and closed the entire Ventura Freeway. I don't know how many of you realize that all these supermarkets were building, say, twenty thousand feet of floor space and ten thousand feet of warehouse, and they were, they would bring a truck out twice a week to fill them. These markets have all converted their warehouses to more selling space, and they all drop-ship every day. So we've got ten times more market trucks on the freeways, and when these sixty-footers are empty and they're going past, they step on the brakes, they have to jack that, and we're getting like a jackknifed truck a week here. So I think that building a safe, you should look into whether these warehouses have been legally converted into sewing area, because if we went back to warehouses and the markets, we would not have all these trucks on the road. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes today's meeting. Madam Cook, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Motion to post a referral.
Those requests, uh, excuse on the desk. Councilwoman Pacheco requests to be excused Tuesday, April fifteenth, and Wednesday, April sixteenth for personal business. Those both meet council policy.
Mr. Pacheco is excused.
And that clears the desk.
Members, are there any announcements today? Any announcements? Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that I was reminded by Councilmember Hernandez about Monday, the celebration of Cesar Chavez. It's become more than a celebration, just a holiday, but a day of service for people from other communities to contribute to our community here in Los Angeles and California. And so I would just remind people of that. There's lots of opportunities of how you can make it a day of service for members of the public. Cesar Chavez Foundation, one of the best sources online, you can go, and they have great opportunities. It's not too late for Monday to help out farm workers, building homes, to help out hunger and other things in our community, many of the things that Cesar Chavez did for us that we encourage. All I'm saying is...
Mr. Garcetti, other announcements? Mr. Reyes.
Yes, thanks, Council President. Tomorrow we'll have a major environmental fair in northeast area. We'll be working with the departments, communities, neighborhood councils. We'll be having places where you can come and drop off your used oil, other debris that might be too much in the yard, as far as bulky items. It's one great event to start cleaning up, get ready for spring cleaning. I just want to thank you all for attending, and we should have fourteen sites, you know, drop-off points. We'll have crews of people out there and community folks out there cleaning up our streets. So we invite you all to come down.
Other announcements? Mr. LeBarnes.
Call on Los Angeles Times reporter Tina Don over here right now, please, if you can come from the press. As you may know, Tina has been reassigned from City Hall, and she is going to the great San Gabriel Valley to cover that for the Los Angeles Times. And I thought it was appropriate, being that it is her last day here at City Hall, that we recognize her informally with a list of all the festivals, so you can come back to Los Angeles and really enjoy what's beautiful. And also, Mr. President, and formally...
Council President Padilla.
With a certificate of congratulations. We've all known Tina, we've worked with Tina, we've talked on the record, someone who didn't even dare to talk off the record. But Tina, you did a tremendous job for the Times, and this is just one of those, every once in a while, reminders of the role of the media in this country, the role of the media in communicating to the general public what this city government does, what it has yet to do, what it needs to do. You do it with professionalism. We've done it very, very successfully, and we're going to miss you around here.
I think Councilmember Perry wants to add some words as well? Or is this for something else?
No. But I, no, I do. I wanted to say I'm going to miss you, and that your reporting was always fair and well-researched and honest, and you've got a great personality, and you were really able to make people talk.
Councilmember Grul.
That is so true, Jan, which you don't always want to do when you are talking to a reporter. But I agree, Tina, you always made us feel welcome and that we could talk to you, and when we wanted to talk off the record, you were always obliging and have written some extraordinary stories. And we all know that the press does make a difference in our ability to make policy. Great ideas sometimes come from articles we read, and you also help us get the word out on important issues. So you will be missed here in Los Angeles City Hall, but we know you'll come back and visit us, and appreciated. When I was talking about who I wanted to chat with when I was going to make my big announcement about having a child, it was Tina, who I had, you know, felt very comfortable and developed a relationship with. So we will definitely miss you, too.
The gentle cyclist from Canoga Park? Mr. Zine.
That's the southwest San Fernando Valley. Mr. Garcetti. Congratulations to you. I know that you're going to spend some time with your young one and keep that beautiful child away from motorcycle riders, out of traffic, in the safe environment, and best wishes to you. You've been a real asset here at City Hall, very, very professional, and a great tribute to the Los Angeles Times. Thank you. Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really liked what Wendy said, because, I mean, not only has it been a real pleasure to wake up in the morning and to be on a first-name basis with Tina's articles and see what Tina wrote, but Wendy's right. I mean, you've covered public policy, but in ways that probably you, you know, really only can, the final analysis tell, you've really influenced public policy, because one thing that comes through in your writing is your own personal commitment to making sure the government does things the right way. And I am one person, but I know not the only person here, who has read what you've written and, you know, on the way to work, thought about, well, how can I make things a little bit better? And thank you for that, Tina.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tina, I think, let me give it in greater detail. The reason why people talk is, and I'm going to miss this around here, Tina, what, what, what? Tell me, tell me, tell me! And it's that which you have to suddenly spill your guts out, because it's just the onslaught of telling you at that moment, you have to let her, you know, everything. And it's been a great service to the people of Los Angeles. I know you covered my race, and I first got to know you when you covered the thirteenth council district race, and that was really exciting. Tina, for all of you who don't know, is also an incredibly skilled artist who makes incredible bracelets and necklaces. And this is not a commercial pitch, because I don't think we're allowed to do that in City Hall. But just for the aesthetic value alone, people should look at them and feel free to contact Tina, tina@latimes.com, to look at these wonderful creations that she makes. But we know that as you get closer to a community too, it's really a benefit to San Gabriel, and having that beat, they're very, very lucky. We will miss you tremendously here.
Well, thank you. As Tina leads the pueblo to go to the first city in the county, San Gabriel, which is ten years older than Los Angeles. That's from where we came from, that mission. Jack Weiss, keep laughing. I'll get you in a mission one day there. Okay. That mission from whence we left to walk nine miles, now you're going nine miles back, but you're going to the birthplace of really the region. Let's give Tina a big hand.
I'm not used to talking. I just wanted to tell you that it's been a pleasure and an honor to have covered you for the past three years. What you do is incredibly important, and it's been really nice being a part of that. And, you know, I'm not going away. I will come back and visit you. And I know that our paths will cross again, so, thank you.
Spell the last name? Spell it correctly?
I know.
Members, any other announcements today? Other announcements, weekend events? In following Mr. Garcetti's announcement, there are other, there's numerous, as you've mentioned, Cesar Chavez Service Day activities going on. In addition to those Service Day activities, which are taking place not only on Monday but beginning tomorrow, Saturday, there is an annual march in the San Fernando Valley, beginning at Brandt Park in Mission Hills, I believe it's at eleven a.m., beginning with a flower dedication ceremony that proceeds from Brandt Park in Mission Hills into the city of San Fernando. So for the residents of the San Fernando Valley and the entire city, you're all invited and welcome out to that event as well. Any other announcements? If not, then let's wish our Los Angeles Dodgers the best of luck tonight as they take on the world champion California Angels. This is an exhibition game, opening day is not until April seventh, I believe, but tonight is the first game of the year being played at Dodger Stadium, the Trudon, the Men in Blue.
A quick announcement before adjourning motions also, this will be the first time, I think, Mr. Reyes is going to be there too, there's going to be a shuttle from the Dodgers from Union Station to Dodger Stadium to help the communities that Mr. Reyes and I represent, Echo Park, and to be able to reduce traffic in those areas. So feel free to come by, folks, six o'clock, and you can take the shuttle to Dodger Stadium from Union Station, and that link to public transport, which is so great.
Mr. Reyes, are you tooting the horn on that? Mr. LeBarnes.
And again, I want to salute the California Angels, for which they came from Los Angeles and got their name after this city became world champs. God bless the Angels.
And Mrs. Archie lives in whose district?
Your district.
Oh, yes, oh, Audrey. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Yes, she lives in the second council district. Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla.
Too bad they're going to lose to the Dodgers tonight. Members, are there any adjourning tributes today? Please rise. If you can ask some members of the public to please stand. Adjourning tributes? Mr. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand the seat today to talk about a woman who many of us knew as a great community activist. Tammy Ginsburg lost her life on Monday evening, March twenty-fourth, two thousand and three, in a tragic traffic accident. She is survived by her sons, Brad and Greg Ginsburg. Born and raised in the Pacific Northwest, Tammy often spent summers in Southern California. She operated a jewelry business before entering real estate around nineteen ninety. Her residential property sales activity took her throughout the San Fernando Valley, helping clients find that perfect home. She joined the Sherman Oaks Chamber of Commerce as a representative of her office in nineteen ninety-seven and became involved in several committees. Chamber President, she worked diligently to enhance the connection between the Chamber and the Sherman Oaks Homeowners Association. Schools and the education of our children, transportation and parking issues were of special importance to her profession and as a volunteer. The annual Sherman Oaks Street Fair was a joy of the life, as was raising funds for the Children's Miracle Network of Children's Hospital of LA. She was elected Southwest Southeast Regional Director for United Chambers of Commerce, serving throughout two thousand and two and re-elected for two thousand and three. She was always willing to help business flourish and grow in the San Fernando Valley. She is someone I know, Councilmember Weiss and I joined together in this, because she was not only the president of the Chamber of Commerce, but also resident of the second council district. Memorial services will be held on Monday, March thirty-first, two thousand and three, at one p.m. at Sportsman's Lodge Event Center, one-two-eight-three-three Ventura Boulevard near Cool Water Canyon Avenue. In lieu of flowers, the family suggests donations in Tammy's name to Children's Miracle Network Care of Children's Hospital. And I just want you to know, I, she was someone I had the pleasure of knowing and made such a difference in the area of Sherman Oaks. On Monday, so many people called who wanted us to know that we've lost a treasure of the San Fernando Valley, of our Sherman Oaks community.
Mr. President? I just want to join in with what Ms. Grul said. Tammy was a friend of mine, she was a friend of yours, and she was an absolute fixture in Sherman Oaks every year when there's the great street fair. You know, you see Tammy marching up and down from booth to booth. She, I mean, I, I actually, I don't know how you felt, but I mean, I, when I heard the news that she died, I didn't believe it for a second. I mean, I knew it was a mistake, and it wasn't, and it was evidently a tragic car accident that took her life. And a lot of, I know a lot of very devastated people right now. I know you do too, Ms. Grul, and I just want to extend the sympathies of myself and the many people who work in my office who are very close to Tammy's, to her family. Thank you.
Other tributes? Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues ask that we adjourn in memory of Alfredo Antonio Correna. He passed away Sunday, March twenty-third of this year. He suffered a kidney failure during his, he was employed at one of our local restaurants called Columbo's in the community of Eagle Rock. He was very active in the community, introduced himself to many of the organizations, did great community projects, would volunteer his time on those projects whenever anyone needed help, and he always tried to help out his neighbors in their times of need. Alfie, as his friends called him, will be deeply missed by everyone in the community and anyone who would visit or eat at Columbo's restaurant. He's survived by his spouse, Roxanne, his daughter, Margarita, his son, Alfredo Junior, his mother, and his forebrothers.
Mr. Parks.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have two adjourning motions. The first one is a tragic traffic accident that took the lives of Rubina and Lucia Alvarez. They are the mother and sister of Maria Rutledge, who is affiliated with the Eighth District Southeast Neighborhood Council. Funeral service to be held in Long Beach on Saturday, March twenty-ninth. Also have a second adjourning motion in honor of Joseph Fred Powell. He was one of the first African-American CPAs in the country. He passed away on Thursday, March twentieth. He served his country with honor in United States Air Force from fifty-four to fifty-eight. He also served as a certified public accountant and auditor for the Department of Defense and with the Defense Contractor Audit Agency. After thirty-five years of service, he retired as the regional audit manager and was the only African American who served in that capacity. He served many organizations in various capacities, including the United States Defense Federal Credit Union, where he served on the board of directors, held several offices, including president, and he served on the Association of Government Accountants as the regional vice president for the western region. He leaves his wife, Opal, two daughters, and several other relatives.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. We want to adjourn in memory of Ben Lucky Lerner.